Welcome to Scotch Plains, New Jersey. This is Verizon FiOS, Channel 22, and Comcast Cable, Channel 34. Scotch Plains Television, your town, your TV.
Scotch Plains Television presents a meeting of the Township Council. And now, from the municipal building, the Scotch Plains Mayor and Council.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. I'd like to call to order the conference meeting of March 4th, 2014, to order. Ms. Lucina.
I wish to make the following announcement to show compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, known as Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of New Jersey, 1975. Notice of this meeting was given by adopting an annual schedule of the location, time, and date, sending copies to the Scotch Plains Fanwood Times, the Star Ledger, and the Courier News, posting in the municipal building, and filing a copy with the township clerk within seven days following the annual organizational meeting of this body. If everyone would please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, with all its powers and all its resources.
Thank you. Ms. Lucina, would you please call to roll?
Mrs. Giannella?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Marcus?
Here.
Mr. Vastin?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here.
Next up on our agenda is public comment. Anyone wishing to address this council, please come forward, state your name and address, and your question. Hi!
Hello, I'm Amanda Marcus, Councilman Marcus's daughter. And I'm here because next Wednesday, March 12th, at the high school, is Senior Citizens Day, and it's going to be held from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And all senior citizens in town are welcome. We're going to have entertainment, breakfast and lunch, and a lot of fun stuff. It's going to be hosted by Student Government Association and other high school students.
Wow, that sounds fabulous. That's fabulous. Expecting a big crowd, right?
Yes, we are, and we hope that more come after this announcement as well.
And just one more time, can you, why don't you give us the date and the times one more time?
Sure, next Wednesday, March 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
And senior citizens appreciation.
Yes.
That's great. Thank you for coming out and sharing that with us.
Thank you.
And we've got that televised, too.
And just to add to that, Mayor, for any seniors who need to arrange a ride to attend that, please contact the Scotch Plains Senior Transportation Hotline at 908-322-5151.
Thank you so much.
And they will help out.
Thank you, thank you. Look forward to doing that. I'm going to look for a ride.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
Elmer Pete Terry, 1421 Rawway Road. Addressing the Scotch Hill Golf Course Clubhouse, on February 18th, I addressed the council as to the status of the repair to the roof of the clubhouse building. I stated that it was my understanding that two amounts of money had been obtained. I wasn't sure exactly how, by grants or ordinance, but I thought the amounts were $140,000 for repair, replacements of the roof, and stabilizing the building, and $50,000 for an architectural study. Mr. James said that I had, what I had said was not exactly true, but nothing would be done until the architecture study was complete, and he had not received that report as yet. Mayor Glover made some comments, and Councilman Vastin added that there had been repairs made to the roof, and there was no immediate danger. The following day, I was called by a member of the senior citizen and asked what had happened at the council meeting concerning Scotch Hills, as they were unable to attend the council meeting. I reiterated what I said to the council, and then was told that the seniors' meeting had been canceled for the very next day after the council meeting because of the disaster that had happened with the roof leak that had made the building unusable. The detail on my own mind, what my understanding was of the matter when I last addressed the council, I looked up the agenda and made it so the conference meeting of September 3rd, 2013, where I found introduction of an ordinance number 2012-12, introducing of bond ordinance number 2013-12, capital ordinance to appropriate the sum of $138,163 for the undertaken professional studies of and, and I emphasize "and," various repairs and improvements to the Scotch Hills Golf Course Clubhouse in, by, and for the township of Scotch Plains County in Union, New Jersey, and to transfer unexpended bond ordinance balance and reapportion same to finance such appropriations. After discussion and explanation, Councilmember Giannella made motion to introduce first reading ordinance number 2012-12, which was seconded by Councilmember Beckerman, with all in favor. Now we'll move on to the meeting September 17th, 2013. Public hearing and final adoption of the ordinance, capital ordinance number 2013-12. I can read the ordinance about the, and the two pages of text if you wish, but it's the same as what was introduced on the, at the conference meeting. Councilmember Giannella made motion to open the public hearing on the ordinance, seconded by Councilmember Beckerman. There was no public comment. And Section 5 of this ordinance will take effect at the time and manner provided by law. Councilmember Giannella made motion to open the public hearing. There was no public comment. Councilman Giannella reaffirmed the township's commitment to the preservation efforts. Councilmember Giannella noted that the project has potentially become an incredible venture. Councilmember Giannella noted that township will also proceed to formalize efforts to accept donations toward the project, as several interests have a personal stake in the project. Councilmember Marcus requested the council continue to memorialize the commitment to the project by adopting a local preservation ordinance. Councilmember Vastin acknowledged the cultural and historical significance of Scotch Hills, and affirmed the council's commitment to store the building to community service with a new generation going forward. And it passed unanimously, everybody was in favor, obviously. Now to return to my emphasis on the word "and" in the ordinance, undertaking professional studies and various repairs and improvements. According to Free Dictionary by Farlex, the word "and" means together with, in addition to, or as well as, meaning that various repairs and improvements can go on concurrently with the professional studies and are not restricted in the ordinance to having the professional studies completed first. In any event, to have spent money year after year, time after time, to repair the leaks, the significant water damage caused by the leaks, instead of repairing the roof, the cause of leak is not only morally wrong and tragic considering the significance of the building, but in a business sense incompetent and inexcusable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Sir?
My name's Steve Price. I'm a member of the part-time education staff at the Metropolitan Museum of Art in New York. I'm also an adjunct professor of history at King University. I'm the person who wrote the statement of significance for the Shady Rest building, and applied for and got a certificate of eligibility for Shady Rest for the National Register of Historic Places. That's the authorities on the subject. The New Jersey State Historic Preservation Office officially certifying that the building is registered for, is eligible for the National Register. And I have to say, the way this township's government has neglected that building is an outrage and a disgrace. On the face of it. And don't tell me it's not purposeful and planned, because it obviously is. It bluntly obviously is, for too many years. And there's two problems with that. First of all, folks, that's an old chestnut, everyone knows it. Second of all, the building doesn't belong to you personally, it belongs to all the people of Scotch Plains Township.
Yes.
And as their duly-elected government, it's your job to maintain and upkeep the people's property, and it hasn't been done for too long. I spent five years of my life running a restoration project on a national register site. So I've dealt with historic preservation architects, engineers, contractors, politicians, God forbid. Okay? I've been there and I've done that. When you have a severe need, you deal with that severe need immediately. You don't sit on your hands and wait for a project plan. I've done it, okay? I've been there and I've done it. That's not what you do. That's not the way it works. You have a severe need. The building needs a new roof. Don't tell me it can't be fixed. On top of having run a restoration project for five years, I'm an old homeowner. My house is 110 years old. So for my wife and I, historic restoration and preservation are 24/7/365. It's something we live. And when our roof leaked, you know what we did? We got the roof fixed.
Yay!
We got the roof fixed. That building needs an entirely new roof now. And I have to say, it begs the question, why does it irk some people in this township so much that that great, rare, historic building still stands after more than 250 years? Why does it bother some people that by the grace of God, it's still there? And at this point, it's just for the grace of God that it still stands. I mean, I know a bunch of us were praying, please don't let it snow heavy again on that roof, and we got what we prayed for. I'm told that the idea has been floated of commissioning a statute to John Shippen. For those who don't know, and there are people listening at home, John Shippen was the resident pro at Shady Rest for 30 years. He was the first American professional golfer. He was, right. He was not only the first African-American to play in the U.S. Open in 1895, he was the first American to play in the U.S. Open in 1895. Before John Shippen, they were all European professionals. There were no American professionals. He played in the U.S. Open a total of five times. And the best monument you could ever make to John Matthew Shippen, Jr., is to fix the goddamned roof.
Yay!
Now, it needs a new roof. Put a roof on it. It's as simple as that. Call the historic restoration architect, Barton Ross, get him to recommend qualified contractors, and put a new roof on it. And that's the way it has to be run, every step of the way. Then, when you have your project plan in hand, you go back and you address each thing every step of the way, and you have your historic preservation architect...
I'll have you removed from this chamber. Don't do that again.
Run a bidding process.
Yes, excuse me, excuse me.
That is completely inappropriate.
Excuse me, wait, wait, stop.
We have...
Right, okay.
Your sign is running the television camera, that's completely inappropriate. Use the language to start. The huge amount of work we need to have some decorum in this council chamber. I understand this is an emotional issue for a lot of people.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, folks, folks, please.
When I hear people starting to shout from the audience, we lose decorum. This is not what a government meeting should be about. Please be civilized and make your comments, and sit down. We have to move on.
Let me say, too, we appreciate everybody being out here. This is a passionate issue for all of us here. And if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Price, sticking around, because there will be a discussion that I've asked to be put on this agenda for today, which is the Shady Rest, and at that, I am going to make a motion that we put on a new roof immediately. So I hope you'll stick by and hear that commentary.
I'll just conclude by saying this. You're right, it is emotional. This is not only the first African-American-owned and operated country club in America, basically that means it's the first in the world. It's right here in the middle of our county, Union County. It's in your backyards. Not it can be saved, it should be saved, it has to be saved. And it's very easy. It just needs a new roof now. Then after that, you go back, step by step by step, and you address everything in the historic preservation architect's project plan. And you have that historic preservation architect run a bidding process. That's how it works. So that he brings in qualified contractors that he knows and he's worked with, and he knows can get the job done. I know because I've done it. That's how it goes, okay? It's as simple as that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We really appreciate your coming out.
I have one in my car, thank you.
My name is Kimberly Nix. I live on Myrtle Avenue in Scotch Plains. Okay, is it working?
You'll have to speak a little louder. Hold on a second. Maybe the wire can help. Bonnie, you do everything.
Okay, hello?
Just talk closer to the mic, that's good. There you go.
Hi, my name, am I speaking loud enough? Because I can talk louder.
Talk louder, people are...
No, I don't want it to be, okay? My name is Kimberly Nix, and I live on Myrtle Avenue in Scotch Plains. I think that, you know, there's probably other people that want to discuss the Shady Rest, but I want to talk about the fact that this body right here, the council, wants to take away our right as citizens of this town, the right to vote for our mayor. And I think that is so, like, sad, that you want to take my right, my son's right, who just started voting, the right to take away our right to vote. I don't understand that. I mean, that's like a new apartheid, new version of apartheid in this country. And I'm just asking, Mr. Marcus, do you plan on running? And you don't have to tell anybody here that whether you plan on running, that's, you know, between you and whoever you, your higher power is. But you mentioned that you want nonpartisan elections, but there are 565 municipalities in New Jersey, and only 16% have nonpartisan elections. Are you telling me that 84% of New Jersey municipalities are wrong? Also, why are you trying to take away my right to vote for the mayor of Scotch Plains?
I think...
I don't think we should...
And number one...
This is not a debate session. We have the right to make a comment. You have no obligation to respond.
I told, I asked, I told him he didn't have a right. I told him he didn't have, he didn't have to answer.
First of all, I'll be happy to address your statements and your comments when the discussion is held.
Okay, but I, you don't have to say nothing now.
I'm hoping that you'll see it, you'll see it differently at that time. Well, I understand that, but I'm exercising my right to speak and say what I just said. So that's my response.
Okay, that's your response.
I'll have, I'll have more to say when we get to the topic.
Okay. And then, I want to know, why do you have the right to vote for a mayor behind closed doors? I think that's just so, you know, the finger that you point at somebody else, you got three fingers pointing back at you.
That's, that's just not accurate. It's just not accurate.
Can I finish?
Sure, but you're, you know, you're making accusations wrong to...
Did you just tell him he didn't have to comment?
No, I don't have to.
But he's going to comment.
I've been known to comment from time to time.
But he's going to comment, okay? I said I was going to be peaceful, but he's going to comment regardless. Who should be put out of the meeting right now? Because he's commenting on something I'm saying, okay?
Well, I think I have the ability to do that, so...
On which part? You going, who's going to put it?
To comment. But there'll be more to comment on when we get to the issue.
Okay, but I'm saying, you got three, one finger pointed at me, or the, here.
I don't have any fingers pointed at you.
The council itself. One finger pointed at us, and three fingers pointed at yourself. You should look at it. I mean, it's not fair. We, I mean, all these people here probably have been nominated.
I'm glad to hear your comments. That's the whole point of having a discussion.
Okay, all the people here have been nominated, okay? Now all of a sudden, we get an opportunity to vote.
That's also not accurate.
To vote, okay? The Republicans, whether or not they've been nominated, or whether they've been appointed, have a right, they've been, they've had a right to vote, okay? Now you're going to tell me I don't have that right to vote anymore? That y'all are going to go behind closed doors, okay? You're going to go behind closed doors? I may be putting you on blast, that's why you, you know, you feel in some kind of way right now, okay?
I'm happy to talk about it, ma'am. I brought it up, and I'm happy to discuss it. And I'm glad you came, and we'll have a full discussion about it.
Okay. But you, I mean, it's not fair. It's just not fair.
That's fine. I'm, you know, I'm glad you want to state your opinion.
Okay, but you keep talking.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, my name is Judy Terry, 1421 Rawway Road. I've been listening to comments about the Shady Rest and our home up there from before. And I think it's a travesty what's been going on with this, trying to get the roof fixed. You've stopped, stopped eight measures, which haven't done anything for the roof. All they've done is just cover up where the leaks have been. It's about time we stopped tap dancing around, and I think it's unconscionable. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Matt McTammany, 1140 Maple Hill Road. I have a comment about something different. It's about the school parking around the McGinn, along Maple Hill, Elizabeth, Jersey Avenue. It gets very congested in the afternoon. There's a lot of no parking here, the corner signs that seem to be neglected. I'd like to ask if the town had, would kind of consider maybe looking to kind of investigate that traffic flow. I know that my wife's kind of been in contact with some members of the council and Sergeant Hernandez, trying to alleviate the plan, or to come up with a plan to alleviate the situation. But there really is a massive issue with, with traffic flow when you come down Maple View Court onto Maple Hill. There's blatant disregard for children's safety with the parents who, sometimes the behavior is really kind of surprising. You'd like to think it'd be a greater concern for child's safety. And I know with the snow, it's just made the problem even tougher to handle. So I'd like to, my wife wanted to, wasn't able to come in this evening, but she wanted me to make sure that we kind of kept the dialogue going, perhaps with maybe some, you know, some signs. But it's not just the three months of the year that you get snow down there, it's also the times with the leaves, the leaf, so to kind of, it's really about, it's a quarter of the year after school where parking and really traffic flow is just basically affected. And I think the school might be able to maybe try to send out a little bit more notifications, maybe to try to get the parents a little bit more informed, if that's a possibility. But I also wanted to ask, one of the things that I've noticed, even, I spoke, I tried to leave a couple messages with the police and Sergeant Hernandez in the, in the, in the end of summer as well, was basketball hoops are blatantly left on some of the side streets in our neighborhood. And when you include that into the, just with, it was a meeting back, I think, in December, where it was kind of touched on the leaf situation, those don't, those don't help. And I just wanted to know, are these recreational items allowed on the street as well while I was here? I wanted to kind of ask them.
Do I don't have an answer to that? Jerry, might you have an answer to that?
Actually, it's a public right of where they're technically not supposed to be in the street.
So, yeah, so these are ticketable offenses as well, is what I'm... So I think some of the issues that I see could be resolved really with, I don't have an aggressive ticketing policy, but maybe, but what happens is if one, if one parent gets a ticket, that spreads like wildflower, and then that might alleviate the problem. I know our law enforcement is spread thin, they have jobs to do, but there's, it's, I think it's the only school in Scotch Plains Fanwood, maybe even, I don't want to speak for Fanwood, that doesn't have a crossing guard, or have anybody even looking at the traffic on that side of the road. And from what I understand, a lot of Fanwood parents are actually dropping off using that back path. So I kind of wanted to ask the council to kind of consider that, some of those measures, kind of keep this dialogue going. And then just with regards to this other item, I was, I kind of had read in the papers about the situation at Scotch Hills. Scotch course I grew up on, I've been playing on it in the 80s, 90s, even played, hit balls there in, you know, last, in the last 14 years. I would love to see that place continued. It's a sign of my youth, sign of one of the things that have, you know, just a big symbol of the town. Sounds like you got something planned. I'm not going to be able to stay around for it, but I'd like to say good luck with that, and thank you all for your time and your work.
Before you leave, Jerry, we're to follow up with some issues for the gentleman's, right? His wife addressed us.
Yes.
You may want to, sir, you may want to hear, I don't know if we can get his attention. Go ahead.
I've spoken to the police department about the issue a couple of times. I know Sergeant Hernandez has done a stutter, a report, and is in the process of kind of updating that as well. So, once I get that, I mean, as we all know, Sergeant Hernandez is being the resident traffic expert here, and, you know, we're basically going to have to be guided by his final recommendation. I don't think there's anybody here that could, you know, speak to this issue more than him. So, when I get that report, I'll make sure I get something within the next few days and get it out to everybody. But he has looked at it, he has talked to the school district administration about it, and it's an issue that's come up, you know, aside from just the council meetings over the last week or so amongst the private parties. So I'll make sure everybody's aware of the final outcome of that.
We were going to talk to the board of ed as well, I believe, right? To bring them into the loop. Thank you for coming out tonight. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Perry, 1617 St. Anne Street, Scotch Plains. I'm here tonight to also address the council. Councilman Marcus, good to see you again.
Good to see you, Mr. Perry.
I'm here tonight also to address the council on the, from what I understand, proposed change in the form of government. I oppose changing the government, and I'll set out a couple of reasons why. First of all, the New Jersey League of Municipalities has stated that the majority of towns in this state, or cities in this state, operate, well, not the majority, but more towns operate under the Faulkner type of government than the, I guess what's proposed is the city manager or the manager council type. Quite frankly, I'm in favor of, and I believe most people in this town would be in favor of, any type of government that the people and the will of the people is what dominates. We can go back to the beginnings in this country. You take President Lincoln, we the people, the people is what is important. Now, I heard Councilman Marcus say that he'll have responses to all this, and I really would like to hear them, hear them. For those of you that don't know, Councilman Marcus and I, we, years ago, we studied for the bar exam together. And I also have problems, he doesn't remember that we studied at the library even on Sundays, and I, Scotch Plains Library, that this council has voted to cut back their funds, and they were cut back, so maybe that's for another time. But right now, but right now, this form of government, I don't know where this is coming from. I don't know what the motivation is to change it. I mean, and because Councilman Marcus was on the hot seat earlier, I'll keep it there. But I don't think it's fair just to, just indict him. I think every council member up here would one day like to be the mayor, and there's nothing wrong with that. As a matter of fact, I applaud that. But I wouldn't want to see any one of you be the mayor without the people voting you I don't, like I said, I don't know what the motivation is. But has this mayor, or is it politics? And quite frankly, it shouldn't be politics. We're all from Scotch Plains, there's no one here, I don't think. I've lived in Scotch Plains all my life, bar a few years for educational pursuits, but there's not much you can tell me about this town. Yes, there are Democrats, yes, there are Republicans, but when the chips are down, we all seem to come together. But the tenor, the mood and the tenor of the town the past few years really has me upset. You know, I just haven't seen this before, and like I said, I've been a resident for many, many years. I can't understand why getting rid of the Faulkner form of government would be a step back, in my opinion. I can't understand the motivation for it. The, under the Constitution, I don't think that the founding fathers, I mean, they, they set forth separate, but each, separate, three separate branches of government. The legislative, the executive, and the judicial. Well, if the legislative, which is you, votes the mayor, votes for the mayor and puts the mayor in, as far as I'm concerned, that's a, that's a conflict. I mean, and you'll say that other towns operate like that, and yes, they do. But I would say to you that the towns that operate like that are not Scotch Plains, and they're smaller than Scotch Plains. Scotch Plains is constantly growing. Many people in this town... Many people in this town, yes, maybe a borough form of government, or one of the other eight forms of government is, as laid out in Chapter 40 in, in the New Jersey statutes, maybe one of those would be right for us, maybe a Fanwood, maybe a Roselle, which does operate under a smaller form of government. But for Scotch Plains, that has, is diverse, and is becoming more diverse daily, the only way to hear all of the people is to let the people decide. Thank you for your time. Look forward to it.
Terry Luzu, the Freezy House. Is it historic? Has anyone determined whether it's historic or not? Sorry.
You asked that question, sir, at the last meeting.
Yes.
I'm not sure, I, I, I did not have an answer for you then, and I think I defer to you all to see if we could find out, is it actually a historic site?
Is the historic preservation ordinance going to address that?
The historic preservation ordinance is more of a broader scope issue, not about that particular site.
Okay, so we can determine that it's not historic until someone actually proves that it is, correct, counselor?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. The senior citizen housing, how many units are available, and how long have they been available?
I want to say it was down to, I want to say two were filled in February, so I believe we're down to two, with both of them expected to be filled in March, one March 5th to one end of March. I don't have that paper in front of me to confirm that, to get that brief.
Thank you, councilman. There was a one million plus dollar amount that, with the last time the senior citizen corporation was here, that anyone determined where that $1,420,000 is, and is it in an interest-bearing account?
You addressed that last time, Mr. James. Did we get the gentleman an answer on that?
I don't have an answer yet, Mr. Vester. I will get you, I'm working on getting you that answer.
Okay, thank you. And, obviously, the municipality claims that they own Scotch Hills Country Club. Does, does the municipality have a deed for the Scotch Plains Country Club?
We'll get it, we'll, I'll find it.
The question is, is there a deed for the Scotch Hills Country Club if the municipality owns it? Was the Scotch Plains Country Club taken in a tax foreclosure action? So there's a sheriff's deed.
I absolutely, you know, and there was a video of the facility, and I believe there was reference to that, but I can't say for certain how that deal transpired. But I, but it's reasonable questions, we'll, we'll get you an answer.
So if it did happen, there's a, there's a sheriff's deed somewhere.
I suspect there's-
I will check with the assessor's office tomorrow.
As far as I know, may I?
Yes, please.
As far as I know, there is no deed. I'm, I'm assuming that there's a sheriff's deed somewhere.
Probably a court order, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, counselor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vester.
Jewel Barthay Williams, 422 Myrtle Avenue. As far as public comments are concerned, I believe in kissing them, keeping them short and simple. Who's responsible for the maintenance of the Shady Rest, and how did it get into a state of despair? And as far, as far, as far as my recollection, the funds were approved last year, I think, October. What's the holdup? Why are you stalling?
Good evening. Dorothy Dalla, 228 Haven Avenue, Scotch Plains, New Jersey, 07076. And I'm kind of proud of the zip code, or at least I've been proud of it over the years. I was here in Scotch Plains at the time that we sat back on January the first, and we listened to find out who the mayor was going to be for the coming year. Because we had, what is it called? The mayor council form of government, is that correct? Just shake, just shake, what did you call it, Mr. Llewellyn? You shake, you shook your head and-
Still council manager.
It was council manager? Okay. We had that form of government where the council actually selected the mayor. And everybody in town thought that it was pretty good. No one ever said a word. But at this point in time, I think we've made a slight change, and I am here tonight because I think that we need to maintain our opportunities that we have now to select and elect the person who is the mayor. We have sat back for all too long, and we have put our, all of our trust in our council and in our mayor. Right now, we need to become partners. In Scotch Plains, we are no longer partners. I've seen a mean-spirited kind of behavior in Scotch Plains that isn't going anywhere. Just recently on television, I saw that there was an authority who had the audacity to, to determine the hours that people were going to come in and vote. And I said, as I watched it, that's mean-spirited. And I also think that that same kind of thinking is taking place now, here in Scotch Plains, and I'm concerned about it. I would like to see it reversed. I'm hoping that you are going to, you know, rest on your, your good laurels and come back and let us know that we still play a part in what happens here in Scotch Plains. We really would like to be a part of it. Number two, I'm concerned about Shady Rest. I guess because I've been around for so long, I happen to have been placed on the Recreation Commission some years ago, and they gave the Recreation Commission, through the, the town manager at that time, I believe he, he had something to do with it, they gave the Recreation Commission the opportunity to take a look at Shady Rest. We talked about whether it should have aluminum siding, whether it should have siding, what, no matter what it was, we made the decisions about that building. Someone from the town council made a decision to go on above and beyond the Recreation Commission, and they put the siding on the building. And that is really what gave us the problem that we are now facing, and that is, is it going to be a historical building? Is it not? Isn't it? So we're having a little problem. Somebody now ultimately has the responsibility of making a decision on that building, whether it has siding, whether it has no siding. Mr. Price said that we have a certificate of eligibility that makes it a historic, historic site, if I'm not mistaken. But somebody has the ultimate responsibility here of making a decision. I don't know whether it's our, our town manager, I don't know whether it's the mayor, I don't know whether it's the council, I don't know. And nobody is raising a hand at any point in time and saying, "I'm responsible." Well, you have to get up and you're going to have to say something. I think, I think at this point in time, people are a little unhappy with the way we're floundering. You cannot any longer flounder and tell us that you don't have the money, you don't have the architects, you don't have this, you don't have that. This has to come to a vote, and somebody has to say ultimately that you have the backbone to fix that building and let it stand as a historic site in Scotch Plains. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dalla.
John Thompson, 2323 Redwood Road. I share this sentiment with many other people about Shady Rest, and I'll be short. Everybody knows, no renovation can take place before the roof is fixed and the leaks are stopped. It's up to this, this council in this town to, to stop procrastinating and fix that roof. With respect to the proposed changes in our form of government, we have seen in other states ethically questionable restrictions being applied in an obvious partisan attempts to reduce voter participation in, in, in various states. What you are proposing here, taking away the vote of the people for the mayor, is no less despicable. My own personal view is that the whole discussion is a thinly veiled challenge to a historic, bipartisan landslide that put Mayor Glover into office. Cease and desist, get back to business, we have a budget to work on, you have better things to do.
My name is Chris Thompson, 2323 Redwood Road in Scotch Plains, and I have a couple of questions and a comment. I agree, first of all, with everyone about the Shady Rest. The funds were voted last year in October, I believe I was here for that meeting, so what's the holdup? Let's fix the roof, it's, the building will be destroyed if we don't. Okay, I have a couple of questions, if I may. I understand that a director of public works has been hired recently, and given the importance of this high-level position, I was wondering how the decision was made. Mr. Mayor?
Well, in this form of government, those decisions are made by our municipal manager. I don't, I don't know if I, I can't elaborate any further, that's just-
Which question are you talking about, about the library, or are you talking about the way that-
About hiring the man, hiring the, the public works person.
It's a manager, it's a manager, manager position, a manager prerogative.
Okay, I mean, given the, given the high visibility of this position, and given that the manager is newly hired, wouldn't it be prudent to consult with the council in hiring somebody that-
It's entirely his prerogative, it's entirely his prerogative, but I-
Okay. My second question is regarding Mr. Marcus's comments in the last meeting. Mr. Mayor, during the last council, Mr. Marcus proposed changing our form of government to one where the council votes for the mayor.
Excuse me, I did not propose that, I proposed talking about it. There's a big difference.
Okay, but it's, it's-
Talking about it.
Fine, thank you. The people of Scotch Plains voted by referendum in 1999 to vote directly for the mayor. Do you now propose to take this right away from the people of Scotch Plains?
Be happy to answer that when we get to the discussion shortly.
This is, this is comment section, you have a right to state your position. He will get to it at, at appropriate time.
We're going to get to it real soon.
Thank you very much for your time.
Hello, good evening. My name is Erin Decker, 2032 Church Avenue. On Tuesday, February 18th, I believe the date, there was a shooting in a residence on Church Avenue, approximately two blocks from Park Middle School. The only information I've gotten really has been from the newspaper where they said there was 92 guns in the home. I was just curious if there's anything going forward, if they, if they were permanent, if they weren't, if the home, if the guns are going to be taken from the home. Just curious, I live in the neighborhood, I drive by there a lot, and just concerned citizen, just curious.
My very brief comment to that is, when that occurred, I notified the township council immediately upon finding out about it. It was quickly determined that the situation was isolated and nobody in the nearby community was in danger with respect to any firearms in the home. That is an active police investigation, and I'm sure you understand that we're not able to really comment on that.
And when the investigation is closed, will the information come-
The police department will determine what is appropriate and what is necessary for the public to find out. But like any criminal act, adjudication proceedings are generally public in courts and, you know, in the media, and we notify on an as-needed basis.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
How you guys doing? My name is Richard Nix, and I'm 25, and I have to just say, please do not take my right away to vote for the mayor. Thank you.
Well, I guess you save the best for last, right? Well, as you know, my name is Sylvia Hicks, I'm at 435 Hunter Avenue, Scotch Plains. One of, one of my main concerns is that we've been talking about the Shady Rest now for a lot of different town councils. And I'd like to know why our Recreation Commissioner is not here to address some of these. That's, that's, that's number one. I mean, you know, we're, we're throwing all of you on the hot seat, but the, but the main person that's responsible for that building is not here to address any of this. I mean, the agenda is posted on the website, you can look it up, I'm sure he's in this building, you know, five days a week, so he knows what's, what's going on. Why are we stalling about roof repair? That's one of my questions. Second question is, why would we allow the public to continue to use that building when you need an umbrella to go inside? Because the roof was leaking. Because the day after we had the last town council, we had, there was obviously water, ceiling tiles falling down, they had to take apart of some of the walls from the kitchen because of the, because of the rainwater melting. That's dangerous. I, I mean, I, I'm looking at public safety here. Why would you allow people to go, enter into a building, and people are now using it again, and, and most of them are senior citizens? Why are you, why are you allowing them to even use that building when you don't know what can fall on top of someone? There's a big safety concern. And unless you got a real big fat checkbook to cash a check, or to write a check for someone being hurt, I would, I would think that you need to stop all activities in that building until it's completely repaired. It's not safe. And why would you, and we've got a lot of nerve to rent the Shady Rest, or Scotch Hills, when it's not good? I mean, would you rent a car from Avis that's only got three wheels on it? We got a, we got a lot of brass to allow people to pay good money to use that building, and you know it's not right. It's not safe. I mean, would you walk into a building and you're wondering if something's going to fall on you? I don't think so. But then we gladly take their money, and we let them use the building, that's not right. And going on to, regarding to your, your Faulkner Act discussion, you know, all of you are, how can I say this, you're not black, you're not African-American, so you don't know what it feels like to have your, your vote taken away from you. We, I, I have grown up in a Jim Crow era. A lot of, a lot of my family from the South, a lot of my cousins that were older than I am graduated after me because the schools were closed. Just mildly because of, they didn't want to segregate the schools. But along came with that was a lot of voting issues. I saw some of my cousins go to jail. I saw some of my family and friends in Virginia, they were picked on because they wanted to vote, and they couldn't, they were not allowed to vote. I've been in Scotch Plains since 1954, since the day my mother brought me into this world. And the one proudest thing is I can say is, is that the racism here, if there is any, it's not as prevalent as it has been in the South. But, given, given that said, I don't want someone to take away my right to vote. My forefathers and a lot of people that paved the way before me, they laid down their lives so people could vote and express how they feel. Fifteen years ago, we decided to, or the town decided to put on the ballot to allow us to vote. Now you're going to take it away. You're wrong as two left feet.
Elsie LaStrange, Evergreen Boulevard. Mrs. Hicks asked where the Recreation Director was tonight to answer some questions from these folks who want answers. Mr. James, please answer that question. Where is Mr. Poreo? Mr. James? Mr. James?
You know, we-
Mr. James?
You know, this is not a debate, let me just say.
It is a, oh, yes, it is a debate. Mr. La, don't be his nanny.
No, first of all, he is the manager, he controls all the personnel, and he knows the answers to all your-
Well, where is he?
He knows the questions, the answers to-
Mr. James, where is he?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I, I appreciate, thank you for your question.
You're dodging it, all of you. You're all dodging it.
You know...
Hello, anybody got an answer?
No, I guess...
Nobody has an, Mr. James, are you saying you're not answering that question? Huh? Can you speak up? Speak up.
I think, I think... Now, hold it, stop, 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 stop. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Ladies and gen, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please.
Mr. James, are you going to answer the question?
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
First of all, this is not a, this is not a cross-examination. He's the, the manager of the township.
Oh, what?
Mr. Lair, Mr. Lair, ma, no, please.
Mr. Lair, you're not...
Mr. Chairman, you're allowing this meeting to get out of hand.
No, no.
You're allowing the meeting to get out of hand, Mr. Mayor.
No, I, that's why I wanted to say, I wanted to stop.
You're allowing the meeting to get out of hand.
No, that's why I was asking for the opportunity to say, I think the question was asked. We understand the sentiment. We need to move on. Ms. LaStrange, with all due respect, I, I respect what you're saying, but we need to move on.
Well, please, all you have to say is, Elsie LaStrange, you're getting no answer.
Yeah, Ms. LaStrange, I've known you a while. I really appreciate you coming on.
Please, just, that's all you have to say. You get no answer.
There's no answer to that right now. Thank you. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, hold.
Carolyn Perkins, Westfield Road, Scotch Plains. I'm going to just highlight some of the things that were addressed in the January meeting. I was not here February 18th because I was in Arizona where they broke a record of 85 degrees. Yes. Okay, in the Scotch Plains Times, it shows that Fanwood has six plowers for one square mile. That was in the newspaper. We have over nine square miles. And Mr. Jan said we have 12 or 13 people on the road. That's one thing. A man comes here every meeting to discuss Brookside Park and that pond. And I, as a nurse, have health issues with that. That pond is going to be breeding lots of mosquitoes and west Nile, et cetera. Instead of spending $100,000 on your pavilion, you might want to make sure those kids are safe by having water flowing constantly. Other towns do it. They have these fountains, Disney World, where the water keeps going so it's not sitting there stagnant. I would not want my children or grandchildren eating lunch under pavilion with mosquitoes all over the place. And if they are gonna do something about the mosquitoes, I hope they let us know ahead of time. Like Colleen said, don't go spraying with my patio tomatoes and everything and I find out the next night, oh, they sprayed and all my chemicals are on my tomatoes. In the minutes of September 3rd, it says that the township training for the AM radio has begun. I don't know what they did because all I hear is the road is closed from now through April because of Raritan Road and Haraway, et cetera. It could be used for so much more because it used to say a contact, yeah, go to our website for further information. You can go to the website if, number one, you have a computer or an iPad, if you're that technological. But if the library is closed and we have no power, the only thing you can really use is a portable radio. And that will give you everything. And many people have one, should be in their disaster kit. On the August 20th meeting regarding Scotch Hills, it was stated there's plans to do a long-form application for the National Historic Register. And the second application was gonna be for matching funds for roof repair. An engineer could do a structural study or the township engineer. In those minutes, it said the study would be done in three months. That's over six months ago. There are towns that will, and I'm not gonna tell you the town, but if you see a red light out, okay, there is a number in this town that you can call. There's somebody who logs it in and they'll address it. If there's graffiti in this town, if it's a business, it has 48 hours to remove that graffiti once they've been notified or they will be cited, they will be fined. And if it's, and it's, what graffiti is, this is an attraction for more gangs to write more graffiti because, look, I did this. And now I'm going down to the park and do this. Mr. Poreo showed us all the graffiti over all of the pavilions in different areas. That is not acceptable. And something should be done about that. You see something, you say something. And this person logs it in. For an example, there was graffiti on a sign. The person called up and the woman said, that was reported two days ago and this was a business. Okay, go there. So the business was going to be cited. Next day we drove by, the graffiti was gone. You talked about the police merger and that was in October. And we talked about a joint committee. And I did stand up and say, I believe that should go to a vote. That should be on a referendum. It's just another level of government with the joint committee. Now, when you call our town number 3226700, the message is our summer hours are. Please, please. If we can send somebody to the moon, I'm sure you can fix an answering machine message. Okay. On February 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, a senior citizen died each of those days at the senior housing. So they may have more spaces available. Last week, I wanted to look at the budget, the town budget, to see what you were proposing. I went online. I could not get it. I asked the librarian to help me. She could not get it. She finally went to her computer and she was able to get it on her computer, but she couldn't email it to me because there were 150 pages. I did ask her if she would print one out because the library never got a copy of your budget. And if we want to be transparent, that's the place anybody should be able to go to look at what's being proposed. There is a copy, right now, there is a copy at the reference area. So if you sign out to read the Star Ledger or the Wall Street Journal, you can also look at the budget. I read that one town is getting a free fire engine because of their grant funds and an ambulance. I would think that we could do more grant applications. Maybe senior housing could use solar instead of spending all the money. Maybe you could get a grant to get that stagnant water moving, making it healthy. There's many things. I am not a grant writer. I'm a nurse, okay? But somebody must be able to go out there and find the funds because I understand there's a lot of money out there, but you're not gonna get it if you don't apply. And lastly, the comments made about mayor and voting and so on and so forth. I personally don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, or independent. All I really care about is that you are here to represent the people and do the best that you can for this town. It is a gem. And it needs to be blossoming more. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Guido Pesucci. Center Place, Scotch Plains. It's been a tough night. Right, it's been a tough night.
We've been waiting for you.
It's been a tough night. A couple of items that I have on my notebook over here before I begin my main, before I go to my main menu. There is a parking area ordinance right next to us. Over here, this parking lot. And I believe this is parking lot A or the other one is parking lot B. I don't know which, which, how you guys control that lot. It's a section, it's an ordinance, which is Section 7-38, which states, no parking 2:00 a.m. until 6:00 a.m., parking by permit only. Are there any permits issued at nighttime for these cars to be there because there is a tremendous amount of cars parked there? And the only reason why I'm asking, because three years ago, three, four years ago, while I was reserving my driveway and my parking lot, a policeman came to my house and told me to remove my cars out of there because there is an ordinance there. Now, I had my cars parked there because my parking lot was wet with tar and my driveway was wet with tar. And keep in mind, I only live right across. So it was very nice about it. I says, well, to tell you, and I didn't even notice the sign. So the sign was there, fine. Hey, took the cars and brought it someplace else. So are there any permits issued at nighttime to have these cars parked there? Because they're parked there 24 hours a day, trucks and cars. Any of you people? And are these permits that's been issued, are they free of charge or they charged for...
I talked to the chief about this issue a couple of weeks ago. And no, there are no permits issued. I am aware that the ordinance says that from 2:00 to 6:00, somebody who's a resident that provides property documentation is able to park overnight in the parking lots. And it just, one of those, one of those issues that it predates Bonnie because it says, you know, it's either through the clerk's office or the manager's office and it predates myself. And it's just one of those things that really hasn't seemed to have been done in a long time. So to answer your question plainly, no, there's no permits issued for overnight parking. The ordinance does say, and I believe, I believe it might say $5, if I remember correctly, but I'd have to verify.
It says 2:00 a.m.
Yeah.
6:00 a.m. There's a sign right there. But, but, will you go out, take a look at it?
No, I know, I've seen it.
Okay, good.
And I think the permit cost technically in the ordinance, it's a $5 fee for a resident who can provide proper documentation. But no, it's just one of those things that kinda fell away over the last couple of years and people haven't been, and the township, again, prior to myself or Bonnie, really hasn't been addressing that issue.
So really, nobody followed up? I mean, my, my question is this. If you gotta respect the law there, respect the law. The cops go by 100 million times. There's cars parked there and they take away from the business area because they parked there 24 hours a day. Now, it's either you ticket them or either you warn them or either get the sign out of there. Let everybody park there. It's simple as that. Okay? That's one item. Second item that I have, I begin at the second week, honor, second week of January. A utility pole was struck right directly across from my house at the township border and Derby Road border, right by the dumpsters. Truck took down the two poles, the two lolly columns, took down a tension wire, brought down the light pole down. And at the same time, that tension wire pulled the utility pole down at East Second Strip with three transformers on top. Was any investigation done? Was it reported to the township? Who paid for it? Was the taxpayers of Scotch Plains assessed for the damage or not?
I think I know which one you're talking about. The report was done, obviously. Because if there's an accident, a report is always done by the police department. You know, the utility would typically come out and take care of that situation. You know, as far as damage assessment, you know, who pays for it? You know, I don't have an answer for that right at the moment.
Who, anybody paid for it? Township paid for it? Was an investigation done by the police department? Who took down this pole? Because this pole, I came home at night, 12 o'clock, was up. I heard the bang at 5:30 a.m. and the pole was down.
I mean, I haven't seen an accident report. You know, it's typically not something I do see. They don't come to my desk. So I don't, I just don't know.
I mean, it's been two months, over two months, and we don't know if an investigation was done or not.
I, I...
Am I correct?
No, I'm positive an investigation would have had to have been done if there was an accident. But again, those are things that just, they never come across the township manager's desk. But I can look into that and find out. I just don't know.
It's funny because, you know, you run into a pole, public service, they charge you $25,000 to replace it. So, you know, it's just a question, you know. As you know, my wife and I have been coming to the township council for five past months discussing about this event that Derby Road holds outside, St. Patrick's and One October Fest. October Fest was really the loudest one. We've been stonewalled by the township council, every single member of you guys because all you guys didn't take a position on it and it didn't vote on. So, you know, I'm starting to wonder a little bit if this is right or not. The township manager, it keeps on telling us that they don't need any permits to have this event. But yet, this event over here requires a fire safety code and a permit requires a board of health permit. And I don't understand how you put the stand-up without a permit from the zoning officer. Now, the problem, see, my problem is this. Mr. Pesucci was offered a three-day weekend in Atlantic City with Mrs. Pesucci to move out of my house because October Fest weekend was going to be a loud, 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 and I'm gonna say it again, very loud affair. Now, when you start to hear these things, right away you say to yourself, something is wrong here. And I just cannot start to imagine if any township officials got the same gratuity that we got offered. Now, I'm starting kind of little, get a little perplexed about this. Now, of course, you know, I work in restaurant business. Practically, I was born into a restaurant when I was a year old. I practically was born there. And I'd done from the Everglades National Park to Squanton, Pennsylvania, to Jamestown, New York, Jamestown, Pennsylvania, Springfield. I must have done about 300 restaurants in between from the Everglades National Park. And when it comes to laws of the restaurant, I mean, I don't have diplomas like maybe the managers got, but experience is a lot. 300 restaurants, experience is more than a diploma given. It's been stonewalling us that you don't need a permit. If that's the case, and I don't know if Mr. Lair, you're up to test because I take a couple of meetings you didn't make it. You, you just came in late and, just came in late. You worked out for yourself. But you came in late in December, I believe, November, December. And I don't know if you're full aware of what I'm discussing over here about this. Now, the manager has been telling us that we don't need a permit. And I've been telling him and the township council, I've been telling them that they need a permit for this event. It's like you're building a house. You need a plumbing permit, electrical permit, but you don't need a building permit. I mean, that's funny, isn't it? You don't need a building permit. If you need a fire safety permit and you need a board of health permit to operate there, you must have a permit. Now, my wife and I, we did some research and we asked for these papers from the town, from the township through an OPRO form, which they said was not available. There are no municipal records exist. There is a section, and I don't know if you're familiar with it. There is a section, an ordinance, on a township, on a township of Scotch Plains. It's a municipal land use. This section is a special use permit, 23 dash 2.35. Are you familiar, familiar with that, Mr. Manager? Are you, no, I'm asking you if you're familiar with that.
Well, I don't know the numbers off the top. I had to start reading, and I'll probably know what you're talking about.
You're the manager, you should be up to this stuff.
I don't know every code number, there's a lot, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but you keep on telling me that I don't need a permit. If you, you're telling me that...
Excuse me, Mr. Pesucci, be respectful.
I, I am. I try to...
Try, try harder, right now.
Okay, all right. A section, it's an ordinance. It's a special use permit, section 23, sorry about that, 23 dash 2.35. And I don't wanna read it, because if I read it, maybe I might, uh, you guys wanna section it, just now?
Please, can we bring that to Mr. Lehrer?
Probably with that. Can I have that back, please, because the papers around here, you know, I'm talking a little weary over here. I've got papers, but I gotta give papers to township council when we have meetings and everything else, so I like to see my papers. Because if this disappears, then it'll take me another six hours to go to a computer. Are you familiar with this? Can you give me any answer, or, I mean, I'm... Am I right or am I wrong? I don't know. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Hey, nothing I can do about it.
I believe that the special use permit section is, it talks about seasonal or temporary use of, uh, events. And it's, and we do that for people that want to have, put tables out on a temporary basis from, you know, during the spring or during the summer months. Uh, but it, it talks about temporary or seasonal. Um, you know, my understanding is that this, this event is twice a year, and it's three or four days. Um, and that, to me, it would, it would probably fit within the definition of a temporary use, requiring a special use permit.
So, let me get this clear. You're understanding, yes, that this should be obtained. And the only people, according to this zoning ordinance over here, the only people that can give this out, it's not the manager, it's the township governor body. Am I, I don't know. You, the attorney, am I clear, or, uh, is that correct? Okay. So, this has got to be given by the township council. Now, I understand, Mr. James over here, if I recall, and you guys probably recall, in the January meeting, he said that he was gonna call all the parties involved into this dispute. He was gonna get all the parties together into this dispute, and he was very, very confident that an amicable solution, you could have came to a, a nice, nice solution, right? Now, we waited for this meeting, we waited for this meeting, we waited for this meeting, we waited for this meeting. Now, through an associate at Darby Road, through an employee there, I find out that you had a meeting with them, but never called Mr. Pesucci. Am I correct or wrong? Am I, did you have a meeting with Darby Road Restaurant? Did you have a meeting with them?
The intention of that meeting was you were supposed to be there.
No, and you know why I wasn't there? Because you guys, as I told you, October, November, December, January, don't call me the day of the meeting, at 2:00 in the afternoon, or 9:00 in the morning, the day of the meeting, to make a meeting. Because you know my job, I go away 100 miles, I go away 200 miles, I go away 150 miles. That's my job, that's my job. I, I travel around restaurants throughout the state. So, I, I don't expect you to call me up 2:00 in the afternoon, we're having a meeting over here. Now, can you tell me what was discussed at the meeting? Who was at the meeting to begin with? I don't know who was at the meeting.
Mr. Jones and I were.
Now, what was I called? I am the, the, the number one guy here. I am the guy that instituted all these things. The guy comes here one time, the guy comes here one time, he comes here one time to state, "I'm from Darby Road, and I'd like to be included on the meeting." And he gets called, "Mr. Pesucci was the number one guy that shouldn't be called." It's not called. Now, can, can, I mean, I don't wanna be nosy, but anything was resolved at this meeting?
What, what, what was, what transpired was that, I think his name is Joe...
Joe Morarulo.
Morarulo. And he, he mentioned what the event would be, there would be two events, what they would be, how many days and duration, and how long he wanted live music to take place. And I said, well, we need to talk to Mr. Pesucci about this, see if we can come to some arrangements, some agreement. And that was, he told us what, what he wanted, and, and that was the extent of the meeting. There was no agreement, really.
As a, as a, a permit has been issued for the, for the St. Patrick's Day?
Not to my knowledge. I don't know if a permit's been issued, but, uh, there's, yeah, there was an extension of their, of their liquor license to, to the use...
Was a permit issued to have this affair outside?
Just a, just a liquor license permit.
Okay, but no permit. As that means, they only get an A, B, C permit to have this event, and this event is gonna be out without a township, the government body of their food. Am I correct or not? Who made, who made this decision to let them have this affair over there without the township, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, without the township government body being...
Well, you're asking me whether I believe that the special use permit section applies, and I've answered you that I do believe it does. And that's my position. Um, I believe that it's, you know, at this point, th- this event is now next week. So, for their ability to, to comply with that and, and to go through that process, you know, it's, it's, it's a bit, a little bit too late. But I can tell you that, you asked me my opinion, I gave you my opinion.
But i- i- the problem that I have, the problem that I have, counselor, is that who's got the authority? And we had the authority to issue this permit, or not to issue this permit?
It's the council.
Okay, did the council vote on this? Did the council, any of you guys?
No.
Okay, so that means we still think that this is illegal. Now, back in November, Mr. Mayor, this is still illegal. Back in November, Mr. Mayor, if you recall, back in November, if you recall, you, myself, and Mr. James at a meeting upstairs, or council, whatever you wanna call council. And I brought up a lot of the issues that we have problems with. One of the issues that we said, if you recall, is the next time that they apply for a permit to issue any event, we wanna be notified. Am I right, Mr. James? I mean, you don't have to answer.
No, no, no.
Okay. You don't have to answer, okay?
Okay.
All right. Another, and a bunch of issues that we had, I was said, see, I gotta bring this up to the counselor, because she wasn't around at the time. Another issue, a bunch of issues that we had, are they allowed to put dumpsters on township property, use two parking spaces on township when we already don't have any parking downtown? Are they allowed to have two dumpsters for their garbage, an open space on township property, using two parking spaces?
My understanding is they don't, and they won't.
And my understanding is that they're not gonna use township property for those dumpsters.
Well, let me tell you some. Let me tell you some. With these porta-johns, too. Where they gonna be stuck? I don't wanna see anybody walking out of the porta-john. I'm sitting in front of my house, and I don't wanna see nobody with this porta-john going in and out, in and out, these porta-johns. Okay? That's one. Second thing that I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see people relieving themselves when they come out of the restaurant, between cars out of parking lot, behind the firehouse, between the dumpsters, and behind Scotch Hills back there. Because that's disgusting. It's disgusting. This event doesn't do anything from the town. What it does to the township of Scotch Plains, it degraded already several places. The entire neighborhood over here is already degraded, because they park all over the place, the cops go up and down 100 times, "Oh, look the other way." Guys, legal car, look the other way. I mean, are we gonna have, is this event is gonna be held or not held? And I, I, I hope that you guys taking a vote tonight or tomorrow night, and to see if these people should be granted permit to have these things here.
Thank you.
No, I'm not finished yet. I'm not finished.
Well, you, you, you know, what, what else, what, what else can, can you add to this?
There's one more. Oh, yeah, there's plenty I can add.
No, no, I, I have no doubt. I know that your concern, you know...
Within the next couple of days.
I don't disagree with anything you're saying, or your history of it.
Within the next couple of days, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pesucci is gonna travel the entire business downtown, and I'm gonna start from the Pace Barbershop to the TT Bank, then I'll go from 7-Eleven to CVS, then I'll start from Napa all the way to Valley National, and I'll start from the Taylor all the way to Ross's. And I'm gonna explain to these people how the township government body functions in this town. Where they thumb your nose at you, they don't wanna know your problems, they don't wanna give you answer, and so forth, so on. This is not a way to govern this township. We need leadership over here. We need leadership over here. That's what we need. We need, and we lost the leadership that we have over here. And believe me, there's over 3,000 people in town that I can talk to. Over 3,000 people I can talk to.
Sir, I don't disagree with anything you've said tonight. Uh, Mr. Lehrer, we, we just gotta get to the bottom of it. I mean, the, you know, the gentleman's principal primary complaint back in November, it's very simple. I lived there, all I'm asking, and he was willing to concede much. Said, "But I don't want loud music after 11 o'clock playing outside the restaurant." I don't care if they play it inside the restaurant. Am I, am I saying something not true?
Don't take over there.
Right. But, 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 but don't, but, but not outside the building. And I thought we were making progress on that. I thought that's what all these meetings were, you know?
Mr. Mayor, I understand now, and I hate to interrupt you, that this expanded now.
No, 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 I, listen, listen, I clearly, I clearly understand you, and I'm going...
But what we gonna do about it?
I'm gonna, listen, listen, it's Tuesday evening. I'm going to hope that we can discuss this further and have some understanding, further understanding, within, I know you want it within 24 hours, okay? I'm gonna hope that we'll have something by Thursday morning to discuss here with the gentleman. Because I frankly appreciate your, you know, your concern and the lack of leadership. Why can't we get these, a simple thing like this done? You have been a gentleman, you have come to us, you've tried to resolve this matter, you know. Now I'm hearing that this event is gonna take place, and there is no permit, uh, you know. It, it makes my hair hurt, to be very honest with you. I don't know what else to tell you.
Do you, do I have a manner to ask the counselor a couple of questions, if you guys, the counselor doesn't, doesn't mind?
I mean, I think, you know, you've, you've been very fair.
Am I right, counselor? Can I...
As a gentleman, and I, and I, and I would hope that we can just listen here, please.
Can I, counselor, I hope if the township, does the township also realize this? That in case of a fight, see, my experience in restaurant business, it's right up here, I don't have diplomas there, but it's right up here. Does the township of Scotch Plains realize this, because of the proximity to this event, if there is a brawl, if there is a fight there and spills into township property, do you know what your consequences will be? Liability wise, do you realize, and believe me, when I start building restaurants, we used to have restaurants and shopping centers from all the way, from all the way down Florida, all the way up north.
If your question is whether they have li, the township has liability insurance, yes, they do.
Yes, but what would happen? What would happen if a brawl, all right, counselor, if a brawl starts into the restaurant and spills onto township property, what's the liability of the township?
Well, the township, township's liability would be if, if, um, if, if someone got hurt on township land...
Yes.
Then the township's insurer would be notified.
Yes.
And if it was caused by, because of something that occurred inside and was taken outside, then I'm sure their insurance company, Darby's, would work it out with the other insurance company. But yes, that's why you have insurance, but yes, there would, there would be, there could be liability.
Could be liability to the township. The only reason why I'm asking this, I'm gonna be brief. Because with the restaurants and shopping malls, with the restaurants, big, big shopping malls back and forth. At the opening, when they used to have opening parties, these restaurants years back, years back, they no longer doing that. Years back, they used to have parties for all the people that worked, used to have parties for the township officials back and forth, and they used to set up this type of event that they set up outside. But, a couple of problems, a lot of international chains, I don't wanna mention any names, these are international chains. A lot of these international chains, because they had a couple of problems, would fight in the back and forth. And keep in mind that they weren't selling liquor, they had liquor with the tickets. You give them tickets, they give you... They had troubles on a shopping mall, on a parking area, and the owner of the parking, the owner of the shopping malls got taken into court a couple of times. So, since then, all these companies eliminated that. They no longer have tents outside, they no longer have parties outside, because the liability not only went to the restaurant, but the liability went to the shop, to the owner of the shop. So, that's another thing that we gotta take about.
Thank you, thank you for your...
Okay?
Thank you for the dial. I hope...
And I like to be informed, if you people took a vote on this affair that's gonna be done in St. Patrick's.
It hasn't been, it hasn't been, there hasn't been a vote, but by Thursday, I would expect that Mr. Lehrer will contact and bring some closure here, please.
And I like to be notified on a vote, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. Because, believe me...
I think you made yourself clear. I think, you know...
Okay, I live on Center of Town over there. I can put a big, huge poster over there, right downtown, you know? Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
He's too... Thank you, thank you, Guido.
Oh, yeah, my wife, who had to invite you, who had to invite you over to our house, to see the mess, the mess that they made.
We get it.
You can sit there from the day to night.
Thank you, thank you. We get it. Next, Mr. Guido. Guido, I, we really have to move on. We get it. We more than get it. Please, yes.
Just a question, Jim Calhoun, 302 Drive. On the, on the roofs that they're talking about, on the flat sections, are, would you match the circa, or would you actually go with something that's actually gonna last longer? Meaning, would you put a rubber roof on a flat section, or are you gonna go and put a roll roof that's not gonna get the time period out of it?
To, to be determined, sir. One more question?
We have, we have a very long agenda.
I know, I know, but...
Can I speak?
Yeah, by all means. By all means, sir.
All right, I've been, I'm Jim Chekio, I live at Happle, I live on Happle Court in Scotch Plains, right next to the high school. I really don't wanna speak, except that I can't believe this town that I grew up in is getting so out of hand, it scares me. All right? Our taxes go up every year, we don't get more in services, we get less. We get told we're gonna have a side charge here, we're gonna have a side charge here. Okay? Our manager chose a person who, from what I've heard from people in my practice, people that are my friends, people involved in the, in running this town, that he's a highly qualified guy, the Department of Public Works. I had a personal friend who worked for the county engineering department, worked for, um, Port Authority in New York, applied for the position, and was told that he was overqualified. Yet this guy that was hired, I don't even wanna go down any other things I've heard, but that he's highly qualified because he worked for either a small construction company or a landscape company, that he knows how to plow streets, he knows how to take care of everything else that's involved in public works, including leave and snow removal. We've had a horrible winter, the winter...
We're getting into areas that are, yeah, this is way, way beyond...
Mr. Chekio, I appreciate...
Okay, real quickly, I wanna, since we, when we're talking about, the police are doing a great job in safety. I live next to the high school, I've already discussed this with several council people and a manager. People park illegally every single day. Not one cop, I know it's a cold winter, not one cop can get, I, they won't get out of a car and give anybody a ticket. Every parent drops their kid off at the high school in the bus lanes with yellow curbs. Every parent parks, not every, excuse me, many people park at the yellow curbs every day when school gets let out. These are grown kids. I'm, we're, we're dealing with Brunner School, Colleen's, children go to Brunner. My jo, my daughter goes to Brunner. We walk our kids around, people can't park on Redwood Road, but they can park illegally in front of the high school? I don't understand that. Right? We opened up the side road, my street, which was a cul-de-sac, now it's a thruway. Because you can now access the high school to it, because the chain that was always there, because of safety purposes, was taken away. Well, it has created hysteria for the crossing guards, of which we've had one run over. Okay? I don't understand that. Why you open up another street and make a, a crossroad into a five-way intersection? Okay? I don't understand that.
Thank you.
All right, one other thing on, on shipping. I was on the Shady Rest, I'm on the Shady Rest, um, commission. I, I was on the John Shippen Foundation, the original one. I grew up on Scotch Hills. I grew up walking through my parents' woods to play that course. It was always receptive. We have a great town, there's no racism, we have great diversity. I don't understand, has anybody talked about, maybe we should have put a tarp on this roof before we let it leak into there? Did anybody mention putting a tarp on the roofs? I don't know.
I, I think we've...
Before we allowed the damage just to continue. I don't know. That's the cheapest way to start.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chekio. Okay. I wanna thank everybody for coming up, expressing their point of views. We, we've certainly taken some time, but it's the public's right to be heard. That said, seeing no one else coming to the microphone, I am going to close the public session and move on to some other new business. I mean, I ask if anyone who's interested to stick around. There's gonna be a discussion on Faulkner Act, and on historic preservation, and, and many other things, if you have a copy of tonight's meeting agenda. Uh, with that said, may I have a motion to accept the bill list? May I have a motion, please, to accept the bill list?
Yes, let me just turn to that.
Do you have the number? It's right here.
Yeah.
Here you go.
Yes, I would like to, to make a motion to approve the bill list in the amount of $2,734,799.60.
Is there a second, please? I will, I will second it. Uh, may we have a roll call?
Can I make a comment first, please, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yes, do you have? I didn't hear you say anything.
Okay, go ahead. On page, hold on one second. On page eight, under maintenance of free public library, no, it's not there. It was somewhere under the library here. There was an issue, oh, here, yeah, there it is. Um, under 390, repairs to children's ceiling, is this another flat roof leaking issue? I know their library has a flat roof.
I don't believe that's part of the flat roof, Mr. Jones.
I'm not sure what part of the roof that is.
I know where it is, and I'm pretty certain it's not part of the flat roof.
Okay.
You can go look for yourself.
Okay, no, I, I believe you. Um, what's your question?
I was just curious if that was due to a leaking roof and they're repairing something, or is this internal issues there?
I mean, just a result of a lot of things. I mean, the storm, primarily, the winter, you know, was probably the primary cause of most of it.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions before we call the roll? In that case, uh, Bonnie, Ms. Lucina, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Giolinella? Hi. Mr. Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Marcus?
Hi.
Mr. Vaskeen?
Hi.
Mayor Glover?
Hi. Uh, next item up, do I have a motion to move resolution number 2,01463, please?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move for approval, resolution number 2,01463, authorizing the award of contract for 2014 recycling collection service contract to Giordano Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $151,920, with an option to renew for two one-year extensions.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna ask for a second, but then I'm gonna ask Mr. James, before we call the roll, to explain this to us and to the audience, and...
Just so, you know, the public obviously is aware, because many of you referenced this. A couple of weeks ago, Councilman Marcus approached me with a question as far as, you know, the different options contained within the Faulkner Act council manager form of government. We are a council manager form of government, and we have been since probably the late '70s. As it's been alluded to in the last, you know, in some public comments, the township chose to go to an elected mayor, I forget the year, someone told me the year.
1999.
1999. It's important to know that none of what Councilman Marcus is suggesting we speak about tonight would change the form of government. We would still be a Faulkner Act community, and we would still operate under the council manager form of government. All this does, in all the Faulkner Act forms, there's four of them, it gives you different options contained within. So what I'm going to do in the next 12 minutes, I promise, is just kind of give you a brief, a very brief background of the form of government, and I think it's going to be helpful to, you know, for the public to understand, you know, what it entails and, you know, some of the history of it, some of the applicability of the form. It's more of a refresher, really, for the mayor and council, but I thought it was important to go over the history of it. And then we'll get to, you know, the last slide. I'll talk about Councilman Marcus's suggestions, and then from that point on, I'll turn it over to the township council, you know, to discuss and see where, if anywhere, they want to go with it. So as you know, we do have the council manager form of government. I'm not going to bore you with the detailed history, but I will tell you that it started in the late, early 1900s, and it came out of the study of administration by former President Woodrow Wilson. It is by far the most popular form of government in populations that have, in communities with populations in excess of 10,000, you know, by a two-to-one margin. It was established here in Scotch Plains in 1978, and the Faulkner Act itself came to be in New Jersey in about 1950. And there's four different forms contained in the Faulkner Act. Ours, the council manager form of government. Number two, the mayor council form of government. The third one being the small municipalities form for municipalities that are less than 12,000 people. And then the fourth one, mayor council administrator, which isn't much different from council manager, but it's not really, it's only used by around three or four towns in the state. You know, it would be argued that some of the benefits of the form of government is the administrative expertise of the professional staff, there's clear lines of authority and checks and balances, it emphasizes the professional standards over political concerns, and in an ideal world, it's supposed to promote cooperation rather than conflict. Now, the most important thing is the role of the mayor and the council. And the council and the mayor, as a whole, have the powers of policy. All matters of policy are vested with the municipal council, except as otherwise provided by this act or general law. The council, as you know, appoints the manager, the clerk, the municipal attorney, and other service providers that are set forth in the municipal code. We talked about briefly, well, in our budget session, advisory committees, but the council has the right to make advisory committees that are comprised of citizens, council people, staff, or whomever, that would make recommendations to the staff and/or the council. Council sets the tax rate, they approve the budget, they approve the capital budget, and they're ultimately responsible for setting the long-term visions of the municipality. With respect to the role of the mayor, whether it's elected or appointed, that doesn't change the role of the mayor. The mayor presides at all council meetings, unlike the strong political mayor form, doesn't possess executive authority or doesn't have veto power. The mayor does fill the library board, and that's a statute, regardless of form of government, the mayor appoints the members of the library board. He signs contracts, bonds, agreements, based on the majority consensus of the will of the governing body. And the powers and duties are only such that are expressed upon him or her by the Faulkner Act, and obviously is someone who performs marriages, and he does plenty of those. The legislative intent of the Faulkner Act is that the municipal council shall, in all matters, act as a body, and it's contrary to the spirit of the Faulkner Act or this law as it pertains to council manager, for any of its members to seek to individually to influence the official acts of the municipal manager or any other officer in a municipality. Members are prohibited from directing or requesting the appointment of any person to or his removal from or interfere in any way with the performance by such officers of their duties. The council and its members shall deal, I'm sorry, the council and its members shall deal with the administrative service solely through the manager and shall not give orders to any subordinates of the manager, either public or private. And any council member violating the provisions of this section shall, upon conviction thereof, in a court of competent jurisdiction, be disqualified as a council member. Then every word of that is copied and pasted from the state law. Role of the township manager is to serve as the chief executive and chief administrative office of the municipality, carry out the wishes of the majority of the governing body, adhere to a code of ethics, which, as a member, I belong to the ICMA, appoint and remove, pursuant to law, civil service primarily, and tenure laws related to certain employees, all department heads, negotiate all contracts, subject to council approval. As an example, I negotiate the union contracts, but they have to be approved by the council. I don't have the sole authority to sign those, absent the wishes of the majority of the governing body. Obviously, I attend all meetings with the right to take part in discussions, and I don't have a vote. And at any time, I can investigate the affairs of any officers of any department. And, you know, as needed, I would make recommendations to the governing body for ordinances and resolutions. You know, being the most popular form of government, there's a lot of literature on this form of government. It is, you know, been scholarly research time and time again, and the benefits, as seen, are, you know, the decisions are merit-based as opposed to partisan politics. There's no guaranteed tenure from my office. I can be dismissed at any time by the majority of the governing body, unlike in, you know, the, I guess you would compare it to the mayor council forum, where you elect a mayor, they're there for four years, and no matter what, they're there. I can be fired tomorrow. You have a demonstrated skill set, somebody who, you know, has been doing this for the last several years. You know, the council as a majority, when they voted for me, felt that I had that demonstrated skill set, and, you know, look forward to an evaluation where they can continue determining that. You know, not being somebody who runs for office, you know, I don't have to worry about, you know, who worked on a campaign, who donated money, you know, I can appoint people based on professionalism and have nothing to do with political partisan politics, and it would argue that it would reduce special interest influence as a result in the day-to-day operations of the municipality. As I mentioned with relation to applicability, municipalities all across the country with populations over 10,000 have this form of government, the council manager, by a two-to-one margin. Whether or not they elect a mayor or appoint the mayor, I don't know the data behind that, but it doesn't change the form of government one bit. Governing Magazine did a pretty wide study with Syracuse University back in 2005, and they graded 35 large cities with, I'm sorry, 35 cities with all forms of government, and the only two that received an A were council manager forums. Of all the cities, the average ranking for council manager forums was a 3.0 out of 5, and the average ranking for the mayor council forum was a 2.5. USA Today ranks the top 100 places to live every year. In the most recent one, 2011, out of the 100, there were 51 council manager communities, 24 strong mayor forums of government, and 25 others, or state-specific, you know, some towns have commission town meeting, joint meeting, et cetera. USA Today also, same study, top 100 places to live for populations between 12,000 and 33,000, 32 with council manager, 15 with strong mayor, 16 where other state-specific known. When this form of government came to be, it was because of what was seen as the rampant corruption in a lot of city halls all across the country. And, you know, the old, you know, Boss Hogg era, the Tammany Hall era, you know, Woodrow Wilson decided that, you know, there needed to be a better way. And it was in the early 1900s where one of the first cities, and I believe it was Cleveland, I'll have to check that, you know, decided, you know, to go into this form of government. Now, in New Jersey, you know, it's no secret that we're sometimes the butt of jokes as it relates to corruption here, you know, in the state. And, you know, our most recent arrest, when our governor was the U.S. Attorney, was Operation Bitterig. It was very embarrassing for the state, and it was just, you know, 40 public officials arrested. Of those 40 public officials, 22 of them were in mayor council forums of government, one was in the municipal manager forum, not the Faulkner Act forum, is another municipal manager forum that's used by very few governments, 17 and others, council manager Faulkner Act, none. The history of this, and I think, you know, if you did those studies across the country, you wouldn't find much of different numbers. Now, Councilman, Councilman Marcus talked about the options contained within the form of government, and there's a couple of them. You can have at-large representation, which we have, or you can have wards, you know, where you separate it by town. You can have concurrent terms, or you could have staggered terms, we have staggered. You can have a various number of elected officials, five, seven, or nine. Most towns have five, you'll see some sevens and some nines, not many nines scattered around the state. Or you can have the elected versus the appointed mayor, or the partisan versus the nonpartisan. They're first in the statute, but I put those last because they're the two that Mr. Marcus is wanting to discuss tonight. And the elected versus the appointed mayor, if the council was interested in this, there would need to be an ordinance placed on the agenda, passed sometime by the summer. Now, I haven't even begun to work on that ordinance, because to be completely candid with you, I haven't discussed this with anybody but Councilman Marcus, so I have no idea what the consensus of the governing body on this issue is. If that ordinance would be passed by the majority of the governing body, it would go to referendum, and if the referendum were to pass, it would take effect immediately. The council would then select the mayor. If they selected the current mayor, he would continue to be mayor. If they chose somebody else, the mayor would continue to serve as an elected official on council, and nobody's term on the council would be affected. You have your partisan versus nonpartisan, a little more complicated, you would still need the same summer ordinance placing the ballot, placing the question on the ballot for referendum. If it was passed, it would take effect at the 2015 election, not this coming 2013 election. So those who are running for office in 2013 would have no impact on this if it was affected, but going forward, the 15 candidates and beyond would. And again, just like the other one, it would not affect the current terms of anybody currently serving. So, you know, from there, I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Marcus, and he can talk about, you know, the wisdom of it as he sees it, or why he wanted to discuss it from there.
All right. I really have nothing to say. No, kidding. I want to welcome everybody here. I appreciate you coming. And I want to just briefly comment on some of the comments that have been made previous to now. I appreciate the comments. You know, as a public official, I've always welcomed feedback from the residents of the town, because quite honestly, that helps me and it helps us, I believe, do our job. You know, that's a good thing. What's not a good thing is when you don't get any feedback, and you just make decisions based upon what you decide. So it's a great thing to hear from residents, and I appreciate that. Among the comments that were made, Mr. Jeff Perry is here. He referred to the fact that we studied for the bar together as lawyers, and I remember that fondly, Jeff, except for the studying and the taking the test part. So I'm glad you brought that up. But before we got to that, and before I got to that, I went to school and I got a degree in political science. And it's always been a favorite subject of mine to discuss. And essentially, what I had hoped to do tonight was to have a discussion on the topic of government, on the topic of political science, so to speak, our form of government, how we do what we do, why we do it that way, and to get feedback from my fellow council members and from the public about how they felt about some of these subjects. I can say for sure that, since I've been on the council for the last three-plus years, we've never had a discussion like this. So I thought that it would be an interesting exercise to discuss some of these things, because quite honestly, I thought that they were worthy of a discussion. I have not proposed anything at this point in time, other than to discuss these topics. And, you know, now, I would like to get into some of the reasons why I felt it was important to discuss these topics. The first is the issue of nonpartisan elections. And as the town manager explained, that is something different from what we do here in Scotch Plains. It may sound like a novel idea here in Scotch Plains, but this type of nonpartisan election exists in other parts of the state, as well as other states, and is used in a number of municipalities. And I've thought about this issue for some time, and I have discussed this issue with various people that I've spoken to throughout the town. And I have to say, by and large, and this is by no means a scientific study, but by and large, people have been pretty supportive of the idea of nonpartisan elections. And I suppose there are a number of reasons for that. Nonpartisan elections, as Mr. James indicated, means that candidates seeking public office run without being affiliated with a political party. Candidates do not declare their political party, nor can they. Nonpartisan has been defined as free from party affiliation, bias, or designation.
What's not a good thing is when you don't get any feedback. And you just make decisions based upon what you decide. So it's a great thing to hear from residents, and I appreciate that. Among the comments that were made, Mr. Jeff Perry is here. He referred to the fact that we studied for the bar together as lawyers. And I remember that fondly, Jeff, except for the studying and the taking the test part. So I'm glad you brought that up. But before we got to that, and before I got to that, I went to school and I got a degree in political science. And it's always been a favorite subject of mine to discuss. And essentially, what we're, what I had hoped to do tonight was to have a discussion on the, on the topic of government, on the topic of political science, so to speak, our form of government, how we do what we do, why we do it that way. And to get feedback from my fellow council members and from the public about how they felt about some of these subjects. I can, I can say for sure that since I've been on the council for the last three-plus years, we've never had a discussion like this. So I thought that it would be an interesting exercise to discuss some of these things. Because quite honestly, I thought that they were worthy of a discussion. I have not proposed anything at this point in time, other than to discuss these topics. And, you know, now, I would like to get into some of the reasons why I felt it was important to discuss these topics. The first is the issue of nonpartisan elections. And as the town manager explained, that is something different from what we do here in Scotch Plains. It may sound like a novel idea here in Scotch Plains. But this type of nonpartisan election exists in other parts of the state, as well as other states, and is used in a number of municipalities. And I've thought about this issue for some time. And I have discussed this issue with various people that I've spoken to throughout the town. And I have to say, by and large, and this is by no means a scientific study, but by and large, people have been pretty supportive of the idea of nonpartisan elections. And I suppose there are a number of reasons for that. Nonpartisan elections, as Mr. James indicated, means that candidates seeking public office run without being affiliated with a political party. Candidates do not declare their political party, nor can they. Nonpartisan has been defined as free from party affiliation, bias, or designation. The nonpartisan election system has been described by some as, people who support this system say political parties are not important when providing a service. I happen to agree with that. And I think that that applies to the election of our local government municipal officials in this town, or at least it should apply. Others say that nonpartisan elections are involved, without officially declaring political parties, elected officials are more likely to work together for the group. And I happen to agree with that. Now, I approached this discussion, I guess, from two different standpoints. First, as a resident of Scotch Plains, which I've been for a number of years, having grown up in this, in this town and gone to school here, and lived here now and raised my own family and had my, my own kids go to school in Scotch Plains. And also uniquely as an elected official, serving on the municipal government. So I've seen it from both standpoints. And, you know, given my experience as both a resident and as an elected official, I felt that it was important to have a discussion as to whether or not we may be better off as a town, and it may be better for our residents, if the town council members were chosen and elected through nonpartisan elections. It's not to say that partisan elections are a terrible thing, or that political parties are a bad thing. That's not the case. That's, that's not what I'm suggesting. But my observation has been that political partisanship, political parties can get in the way of election of officials, can get in the way of how governing bodies function. Sometimes it just, it simply can't be helped. Because realistically, in order to get elected, you're inevitably going to be the member of one party or another party. However, many people who consider themselves to be unaffiliated, independent voters, and they're not a member of either party. But if you look at the reality of the situation, how often do we see an independent candidate get elected for public office? That's a rare, rare occasion. So that's why I thought it was important to discuss this subject. Now, as an example of nonpartisan elections, in town here, we elect a board of education. The board of education, as a matter of fact, sets a budget which impacts two-thirds of our tax bill. That's the fact. The board of education, I'm not knocking the board of education, they do a tremendous service to our town. But they are elected in nonpartisan elections. So think about that. As important as we are as a governing body in town, and residents look to us for policy and decisions which affect our town, short-term and for the future, where your tax money goes, the majority of it goes to the board of education, which supports our schools. And our system is such that we elect candidates in a nonpartisan fashion to serve on the board of education. I happen to think that that's a good system. We don't choose our board of ed candidates based upon what party they come from. We judge them based upon their competence, their ideas, their goals. And I think that some consideration ought to be given to perhaps, what if we did that for our public officials? And we viewed our public officials from the standpoint of judging them solely based upon their competence, their goals, their ideas. And the residents make a decision and elect the people that they feel will do the best job. And, and not, not focus on what particular party they come from. Because if you didn't know, you would, you would judge, you would judge your officials, you would judge those elected on, on the record. And it would not be influenced by other things. I want to refer to a, a letter that was written by a member of the audience, Mr. Fortunato. It appeared in last week's Scotch Plains Times. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but to paraphrase, Mr. Fortunato referred to his feelings about it, and he said that it seems to him that if the council members were elected on the basis of their individual competence, their own ideas and goals for bettering the town, and were not necessarily beholden to political parties or political organizations, the town would probably be better off. The council would probably function more smoothly and spend less time bickering. Well said. Goes on to talk about the issue of the elected versus the appointed mayor. So I'm not going to get to that point yet, because that's a separate discussion. And the first item that I wanted to bring up was the issue of the nonpartisan elections. But I'm gratified for the comments that have been made. I think the most, I'm really focused on the second issue, that is the appointment or the election of the mayor, and I'm looking forward to commenting on that also. But I don't want to take up all the time here. And we're just talking about the issue of nonpartisan elections. But I just want to say a few other things. At the local municipal level, in my view, party should not matter. When it comes to the issues and matters that we are dealing with on the Scotch Plains Town Council, those issues are not partisan issues. Those are issues about how we can best serve the residents of the town. Unfortunately, we've probably seen partisanship affect how we've dealt with those issues before my time and, and since the time that I've served on the council. So one of the reasons why I think that the discussion is relevant. I believe that what we're here to do is to serve, serve the public's interest. And I believe that a nonpartisan political electorate system ultimately would serve the public's interests better than a partisan system as we have now. So with that, I'll, I'll yield to the commentary of my fellow council members. And then when we get to the issue of the elected versus appointed mayor, I would like to comment further.
Obviously, I've been giving a pretty nice presentation on a lot of the options under the Faulkner Act, in particular, the council manager form that we have. And I was going to speak a little bit to them, but thank you, Jerry, for summarizing all of those.
You bet.
I found in my brief tenure thus far in the council that really the majority of the issues that are addressed by this council really are nonpartisan issues, if you will. In other words, they're not your traditional Republican or Democratic issues. I think in that regard, Scotch Plains moving to a nonpartisan elections would be wholly appropriate. A concern I have is that, and I think, Jerry, you might be able to help me out here if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that moving to nonpartisan elections would probably require a reorganization on July 1st, which, as I understand, it means you're moving to spring elections. And so I would have concerns of adding additional cost to the town in the way of having to hold additional elections.
Yeah, to that point, the law was recently changed, within the last year or so, that those communities that had spring elections in May, which were always the nonpartisan elections, can now move their elections to November. Some have, some didn't. But I think the law you were reading, and also I read the same law, apparently that section of the state code didn't seem to be updated. So there are quite a few errors, and that's why that one's a little more complicated. But no, actually, they could choose to do it. Not a lot of nonpartisans have chose to move their elections to November. I can think of two towns right off the bat that do that.
Right, because that would be one of my concerns, is that, you know, in light of the school board elections having been moved to the general, we'd be going right back and adding more cost again, and I would be opposed to that. Additionally, I think keeping the elections in November would be good, because generally there's higher voter turnout at elections. I think that's, I, and I think most people would think that's a good thing. I hesitate a little bit to think that moving to nonpartisan elections necessarily removes all political apparatuses from the process. You know, it's probably not, there's probably not any data you can go look at, file data from, from existing nonpartisan Faulkner Act governments and their elections to see, you know, who is affiliated with a party or not. You could look at a voter's individual registration. But the reality, I think, you would find is that in many cases, there's still a political party apparatus there. And while you're not going to have officially declared candidates, you're still going to have a group of Republicans or a group of Democrats, civically minded, organized around the ideals of their party, coordinating campaign activities. So while it sounds good, I'm not sure that we, you know, we really get rid of all partisan nature of the elections by moving to nonpartisan. I think the one place where it really does have a big impact is on the ballot itself. So that when an individual voter goes in to vote on election day, in particular, those who identify carefully with, or closely with a party, whether it's Republican or Democrat, they're not going to come into the voting booth and be able to make a decision based solely on their political affiliation. Because all the candidates would be in just one column or one row without any party identification. And as a result, people would have to really take the time in advance to look at the candidates and make their judgments. And I think that would be a good thing. The only downside or caveat to that is, is if people haven't done that and they still feel compelled to make some votes, you're going to find a big effect for whomever won the draw, so to speak, and is at the top of the ballot. So anyhow, you know, I'm open to this idea. I'm not, you know, I guess maybe we can have the discussions on both before we move to the discussion of whether or not this council actually wants to, you know, make, make any motions to actually put such a thing out as a referendum this year.
I'll speak to this next. This is an interesting concept to me, because it is something that I have spoken at length to. I have a member of my family who serves on the council in a nonpartisan township. And it was interesting to hear his views on this. And it's also something that I've had personal views about for a little bit of time. But I have to say, when the conversation came up in the last two weeks, I really had some time to look back and reflect on what this actually meant. It's not like me to read, but I, I do want to make sure that I get my points across. And I noticed that there were some members with prepared statements, and I would not want to look unprepared. Mr. James, in his presentation, talked about the long-term vision of a municipality. And that is, under this form of government, one of the roles that the council does enjoy. We have an opportunity to really weigh in on the long-term vision of the government. To me, many of the ideas that enter into a vision are rooted in personal beliefs. My beliefs, the beliefs I was raised by, leave me no choice but to very, very proudly declare myself as a Democrat. It's how I was raised. I feel very strongly about those beliefs. At the municipal level, this directly, this is directly aligned with my beliefs that recreation should be strongly funded by the council, that services should be highly efficient, and that funding should be provided in a ways that allows these services to be so. If at any time it becomes the will of the people of Scotch Plains, that partisans, that elections be nonpartisans, I would support this initiative. But I want people to really understand that one of the first ways to learn about a candidate is to understand his or her views. A lot of this lays, when you talk about government, in what their political affiliations are. Did they register themselves to be a Republican? Did they register themselves to be a Democrat? How are they purporting themselves as they become candidates in the process? Council members, any elected official, can, should always and can always be selected on personal merit. Other than elections at the primary level, there is absolutely nothing that prevents someone from voting for a member of another political party. I've made no secret of my personal or professional admiration for a nearby town that is well-run by a Republican mayor. Elected officials should always be chosen on merit. This I completely agree with. But as a candidate, I was very proud throughout my candidacy to call myself a Democrat. Councilman Jones also raised another very valid point. You can always say that there's not a political affiliation. But this notion that politics would be removed from government because someone isn't openly declaring themselves as a member of a political party, I don't think would really bode to be true. One of the other concerns that I have is that we're possibly removing a layer of transparency. People aren't necessarily coming to your door and reporting themselves as a member of one political party or not, but you don't necessarily know who they're affiliated with or who their associates have been. Are they affiliated with a political party that has been in power for a long period of time? Or are they affiliated with a new group who's attempting to bring some change to the process? Since the change in school board elections in recent years, and this is something I've followed very closely, much of the success that candidates have earned has had directly to do with the ballot position. One of the other concerns that I would have is how much of an influence this would really have on the shape of the ballot and the way a ballot would appear. And would candidates be selected on merit? Or would they be selected because they're number one, two, or three in the ballot? And this is a concern that I think people should really think about. And if you want to check the validity of that, look at the most recent school board elections in various towns and research where the, where the candidates were located on the ballot. I'll let the other council members weigh in on this, and I have much to be said about the second piece of this. I appreciate Councilman Marcus bringing this into the public, rather than, you know, this conversation happening quietly. It's good to have these discussions publicly. But for the reasons that I've stated, I, I would prefer to see Scotch Plains continue to function the way it has with partisan elections.
Well, I guess that's because fellow councilmen, this wants, maybe, maybe wants to speak last, who knows? Look, quite clearly, I think it's naive to think that just making, calling yourself a nonpartisan makes you nonpartisan. I mean, Colleen Jolene Eller, Councilwoman Jolene Eller, represented, and she's a Democrat. I'm a Democrat. Never prevented me from choosing the right candidate. And as many of you know, I've crossed party lines. Do what I think is right for the township and for the people I serve. So you go out there and you work to serve them to the best of your ability, and you work with and choose to elect others who you think can serve the community as well. As I said, I think it's naive to think that you just turn around and say, "Well, you know, we're, we're nonpartisan now, so we're all happy and, you know, we're all going to work together." Look, folks, you've been coming to these meetings quite often. You know, there's a lot of contentious moments here. Sebastian has just come in. We witness time after time where there's just, you know, patriotic behavior in this council. Now, I'm going to ask you, does that go away? Because all of a sudden you say, "Well, we're running as nonpartisan people." People have believed what they believe. They affiliate and align themselves with party. And that's nothing wrong with that. It's not to say they can't deviate from that choice and that they're chosen, you know, party. But the fact of the matter is, it's naive to think it all goes away. Because otherwise, I'll have asked Mr. Vastin, "Let's put away the guns. Let's work for the best citizens of Scotch Plains we can do. In fact, I'll buy you lunch." As I've emphatically said, that ain't going to happen. So I'm not naive to think that because all of a sudden we're nonpartisans, he and I are going to break bread and others on this council, you know, think that we're all going to be happy in the sandbox. It's not the real world. You know, I wonder why people want to run as nonpartisans. Maybe because they can't get their party line? I don't know. They're looking for cover? I don't know. I mean, it sounds like a good thing. Now, my facts may be wrong, but I believe there's only 16% of the governments in the state of New Jersey, of which there are 565, operated in a nonpartisan environment. I could be wrong. Someone gave me that statistic. So, you know, the idea of thinking that this is the way to go, well, I don't think it was right for the other 84% of the people. And they chose not to do that. Now, if you really want to look at nonpartisan politics and a real good government, I've introduced to this council years ago, get rid of pay to play. Get rid of pay to play. See, when people get assignments in this job, okay, lots of times, Democrats, Republicans, independents alike, contributed to the campaign coffers. Well, just say, "Guess what? We're not going to take money from anybody. We're going to choose the people based on merit and not based upon maybe political contributions." Maybe that's naive too, that that may never happen. It may very well not happen. But for sure, I think it's silly to think that we, a Democrat, a Republican, a Tea Party, an Independent, a Conservative, should all of a sudden say, "I'm not aligned with anybody." Because who amongst us has time to understand everything about every candidate? So we rely on these classifications to help us, to guide us, to make sure, you know, that they're on the right side of the issues that I might very well probably believe in. You know, there's going to be much more said about how we elect a mayor in this town soon. Something that I'll comment further on later. But I'm curious to hear what my colleague, Mr. Vastin, says, you know. And I'll leave you with one thought. You want to run nonpartisan, run as an Independent. Don't tell me you can't win. If you can't win, you don't have the right support. If you don't have the right support, you probably don't have the right issues. Fact of the matter is, let's not be naive. It's not what's best for the township of Scotch Plains. What the people in Scotch Plains are asking for is for this council to work together. You don't have to change the form of government to work together. I've shared with many of you, I wasn't elected as a parliamentarian. And were to be the best, I'd probably fail at it, at every step of the way. But I believe I'm trying to do what's right for the citizens of Scotch Plains. More often than not, you know, I've reached out to say, "What can we do to give better services? To lower taxes? To make sure that our seniors and our youth are being properly cared for?" That's what we're supposed to be and do, to work together on. Too often than not, you hear, you witness firsthand, how this council just prefer to engage in partisan bickering. And it's all about the campaign, and these issues are all about a campaign because three seats are up this year. Trust me, trust me. You know where I view some of this? It is about politics, folks, and don't be naive. Someone lost an election for the first time in 14 years, the mayor is a Democrat, okay? A pretty independent-thinking Democrat, as my Democratic colleagues have learned over the past year. But that said, that said, you know, because you lost, you want to take your ball and go home? You want to change the rules? Guess what? You know how we do that in America? We wait till the next election. And then we vote again, and we decide who we want. We don't change the rules, you know, halfway across the stream. Thank you. I'm sure Mr. Vastin would love to weigh in.
I actually wasn't going to comment on this. Because the reality of it is, I'm opposed to these changes. I'm opposed to a nonpartisan election. I'm opposed to voting for the mayor as part of the council. So I don't know where the paranoia and election year politics and this, that, and the other. I'm one of the three seats that's up this year. And I'm opposed to this concept of changing the form of government and the way we elect our officials. So, there you go.
Well said. I believe the next item up is yours again, Mr. Marcus.
Sure. I'll start with a question now, and that is, I'd like to know from you, Mr. Mayor, what issues over the last three years have been a Democrat or Republican issue that we've had to decide on this town council?
Well, I'll tell you what one of them was. It was last year, trying to, several, I'll give you two on the financial side. One was not wanting to have a sewer tax that was imposed on all our citizens. That was a partisan issue, make no mistake about it. And you sided with me on that, as you recall. But clearly a partisan issue. When you asked, you asked, you asked, don't excuse me, partisan about it. I didn't say it was partisan, but it was certainly a partisan issue. It's certainly a partisan. I was against it from the beginning. I will tell you that the formation of this.
My point exactly.
Let them finish, Mr. Marcus, please. You asked a question, I got to be allowed to finish. The other thing was, you know, how we spent our budget last year, where I argued that the citizens deserved a break. They deserved a break. You got the lowest tax increase in over 10 years, 1.2%. And yet people argued, not because it didn't make sense, I had the Tea Party arguing that the taxes should be higher. Go figure, go figure. But it clearly was a partisan issue. And I'll tell you, this year, we're going to have the same issue again on where the tax rate is going to come in. Last year, you heard dire concerns. "We're going to be broke in a year. We'll never be able to fund this. Wait till you seize next year." Well, I got to tell you something, we're flusher with cash this year than we were last year. And I'm going to tell you right now, partisan, nonpartisan issue, we're going to look for a lower taxes. So I hope we can work on a partisan issue. Partisan issues, you know, I really believe it gets down to, you know, trying to work together. And it seems, Mr. Marcus, that if I were to tell you, it is 9:00, that's correct, 25 on a Tuesday evening on March 4th, there are people at this council who would say, "Nope, it's Wednesday and it's 4:30 in the afternoon." People have seen it. Let's not be duped into thinking there are no partisan issues on this council. Because if there were not partisan issues, the Terry Lou Zoo, we would have funded and got it fixed. If there weren't partisan issues, and I believe they're partisan issues, we would have had a new roof on the shady rest. I mean, there are things, you know what it comes down to? It's not really partisan issues, Deputy Mayor. What it is, is common sense. What it's common sense, and you don't have to be a Democrat, you don't have to be a Republican, you don't have to be an Independent, a Tea Party, a Conservative, or a Liberal, to display common sense. But this council chooses to be dysfunctional. And you know what? It's time to stop. And stop assuming that becoming a nonpartisan government will make all that go away. Mr., I'm happy to hear you say, Councilman Vastin, that you don't agree with these. I really am pleased. I thought you might, but I suspect that you wouldn't because I know, I presume you're going to run as a Republican. And you know what? And good for you. I still extend to you, at this public meeting, an offer to sit with you and have lunch and try to just break, knock the bricks down and figure out a way, in an election year, to work together for the citizens of Scotch Plains. My offer was open then, it continues to be open. And I'll call you on it just to make sure. And we can bring you ahead of your party along with it.
The last time we were scheduled to get together, you canceled and never rescheduled.
No, I don't think that's true, but you know what? Why debate it? Let me put it this way. Let me put it, you have many records of phone calls. But how's this? See, there we go again. So I'm going to ask the opportunity. Well, the question was asked to me. No, I don't mind, but if the question's asked. But he asked a question, Mr. Laird. I understand, I understand, but you want to know something? I intend to vet myself. I hate to belabor it. I know I go on a lot, but I have points to make. Mr. Marcus, it's back to you.
Quite honestly, those responses are exactly why I think we should be nonpartisan.
So we agree to disagree.
The very fact that you have recognized the fact that issues become partisan is the very impetus why we would have a better system without it.
Thank you for saying that. But again, I think it's naive to think that it would happen that way.
All right. With regard to the second issue, that is the issue of how we choose our mayor. As Mr. Jimes pointed out, the different forms of government. And I've got some information that comes from the League of Municipalities, which is the organization that oversees how governments function and how elected officials conduct themselves. And municipalities are members of that organization as well as the elected officials who represent those municipalities. That website and that information refers to the council manager form of government, which is what we have. In the description of that form of government, it indicates that council manager form of government may have partisan or nonpartisan elections. Talks about the terms of the elected officials. Also says the mayor can be voted directly by the people who are selected from among the council. Now, some prior history, as we know, I believe it was about 14 years ago or so. Up until that point in time, the mayor of the governing body of Scotch Plains was selected from amongst the council. And that was changed back then, 14 years ago or so, to directly elect the mayor. The reasons why I feel that creates some issues is as follows. In our form of government, the mayor is an equal member of the town council, as the presentation showed. No different from any one of us. That's how it works statutorily. That's the law. Some call the mayor, consider the mayor to be first among equals. Okay, that's fair. But the bottom line is, the mayor has no additional power and no less power than any other member of the town council. That being the case, we're all equal. We employ, in our form of government, a town manager. The town manager functions as the chief executive officer of the town. The town manager makes the day-to-day operational and administrative decisions of how our town operates. We collectively, as a town council, make policy and legislative decisions as a governing body that offer direction, pass resolutions, ordinances, what have you, make other policy decisions. But the operations of the town go through the town manager. Now, I happen to think that that system works well here in Scotch Plains. And the reason for that is because, and I believe that this appears on our town website. Excuse me? I'm pretty sure it does. You can check it tomorrow if you like.
I don't want to be correct again. Please, would you continue? And we refrain comments. Thank you all.
In the description, the form of government, it states, "The elected officials represent the township and develop a long-range vision for its future. They establish policies and laws that affect the overall operation of the community and are responsive to residents' needs and wishes. To ensure that these policies are carried out and that the entire community is equitably served, the governing body appoints a highly-trained, professional manager on the basis of his or her educational experience, skills, and abilities. The selection of a professional, nonpartisan manager by the council helps assure that council policies will be implemented professionally and without political influence. While the township manager is hired by majority vote of the governing body and serves at the pleasure of the majority, state law expressly prohibits any member of the governing body to attempt to individually influence the actions of the manager or any other official in the township." It goes on to say, "Further, all administrative service of the municipality is handled through the manager's office, and members of the governing body are prohibited from giving orders to any subordinates of the manager, either publicly or privately. The municipal manager handles administrative functions in the township, which allows the governing body to concentrate on major policy and legislative initiatives. Manager has the full administrative responsibility for the municipality, including appointment of department heads, as well as subordinates, preparation and presentation of the budget, and the negotiation of contracts." That explains what the town manager does. That does not say that's what the manager does. In some municipalities, mayors have some of those powers. Not in Scotch Plains, not in our form of government. As I stated earlier, the mayor is an equal member of the governing body, of the township council. Has no more power, no less. The mayor presides over the meetings, makes some appointments to some boards and commissions, can officiate marriages, signs the contracts that are approved by the governing body. But that's it. Now, having said that, I believe that it's worthy of a discussion to consider whether, given that form of government and given the powers that the town manager has and the powers that the council and the mayor of the council have, whether it makes sense to consider whether it's better to elect the mayor directly or to appoint the mayor directly, as was done previously. By no means, in no way, shape, or form, do I advance the idea that the residents of this town should have their right to vote for the mayor taken away. That's not what I'm suggesting. The residents' right to vote is maintained. The residents elect the town council. So as was done in years past, the elected officials are elected by the public. The mayor can be appointed, as indicated in the statute, which controls our form of government, from amongst the town council. Could be a one-year term, could be a two-year term. But that official has been elected. I believe that there can be a misconception on the part of the public that the mayor is viewed as having powers that the mayor does not have under our form of government. The town manager, as we've discussed, is the chief executive officer and operates the day-to-day administration of our town government, not the mayor. So if the public believes that the mayor can do certain things independently... can do certain things independent of the town council or independent of the manager's office, that's not the way our town government works. In addition, those that serve as mayor may be under a misconception that they possess certain power that they're not statutorily given in our form of government. Because the mayor's office is no different than any of us. And that being the case, as I said, I think that it's worthy of a discussion to talk about the pros and the cons, about whether or not it makes more sense to have one form of mayoral selection as opposed to the other. I'll again refer to the article that I made reference to earlier, letter to the editor, which appeared in the Scotch Plains Times, which said by Mr. Fortunato, "As for the idea of the council appointing the mayor for rotating one-year terms, as was the case until the 1990s, I think that that would also make the council function better. As it stands now, with the mayor being elected, the person holding the office is likely to be naturally tempted to think that he or she is the chief executive of the town." But that's not the case. Our town manager is the CEO, not the mayor. In our form of government, whether elected or appointed, the person holding the office of mayor has very limited powers. He or she has the power to run the council meetings and can appoint people to a couple of the town boards and commissions, such as the library trustees. That's about it. The mayor has no more power to be involved in running the day-to-day operations as does any council member. And the fact is, the council members have virtually no authority to be involved in day-to-day affairs of the town. Having the mayor elected gets people confused into thinking that the mayor has more authority than he or she actually does. So, that's what I wanted to discuss. I believe that it's, it's healthy to have that discussion. And I'd be very interested to hear the remarks by my fellow council. I've heard the remarks from some of the residents that have come here tonight, and I'd be anxious to hear more following this meeting tonight.
I just wanna say that, to me, the mayor is, is, the mayor is symbolic. She or he can provide a face for the township and is often a representative for the township outside of the borders of Scotch Plains or whatever the respective town is. I believe that especially under our current form of mayor, we should continue to allow people to elect their mayor. We have a township manager, as Councilman Marcus spoke to. That provides for many provisions and really helps the government, the governing body, from harming itself in many ways. I often struggle with our form of government because I'm a very hands-on person. I like to roll my sleeves up. I like to get things done. I am learning to work with our form of government. I, I, I do not believe that removing the ability of the public to elect the mayor by popular vote is a step in the right direction. I don't think it provides for positive morale in the community. And I, I, I would be, I would be opposed to it. That's really all I have to say.
My thoughts on this issue. Look, I wanna second the notion that I think, and this has been a lot of, you know, learning for me recently, having been on the council only three months and getting to know our, our form of government. And the metaphor I can best use to describe our form of government is using that of a public corporation. The public corporation, people generally know, you know, the person with the power who runs the show is the CEO. In our form of government, the CEO is right here. It's the township manager whom we hire. We're the board of directors. We set policy. We don't manage the day-to-day. Our mayor, in our form of government, is akin to the chairman of the board. We have a duly-elected chairman of the board. I think most people in town think that the mayor is the CEO. And that's not the case. And then, quite frankly, I can see how that oftentimes may put the mayor in a tough situation. But that could be the case regardless of whether or not the mayor is directly elected or not. I think that at this juncture, for this council, I don't think it's the, the right time to put this before the voters. If, you know, and I want, there was, there was a comment made before saying that, you know, we're trying to take the, somebody's trying to take the ball and go home with it or change the rules after the fact. I wanna make absolutely certain that, and clear that that's not the case. Pursuant to that, if something was to be done in terms of putting anything on the ballot, I would recommend that it be done, not this year, for this ballot, but next year, for the following year's ballot, so that it's clear that our currently duly-elected mayor is entitled to the four years to which he was, he was elected. I think the issue that's more important to address, though, and one that wasn't directly brought up in this discussion, but I think is, this is the right place to address it, is form of government from a top level down. All of this discussion has been focused on areas under Faulkner Act council manager, and that's, that's fine. But people could take it a step farther and say, "Well, let's change to a strong mayor form of government" or some non-Faulkner Act version of government. And I wanna make absolutely clear, my position... Excuse me? Yeah, I'd appreciate not being interrupted. I wanna make it absolutely clear that my position is that we should remain a Faulkner Act council manager form of government. The last thing we need or want is politicians running the day-to-day operations of the town. Scotch Plains deserves competent, trained, experienced, professional management. Vesting the power of hiring and firing department heads in the hands of a single politician risks undue turnover and loss of morale in the professional staff. Worse, it's a recipe ripe for allowing nepotism, cronyism, and all sorts of corruption should the wrong individual be elected. Scotch Plains is a large enough town that we can afford trained, professional leadership, as we have now, to ensure the smooth and apolitical functioning of the operations of the township and the implementation of the council's policy. And I stress that last point because in our form of government, what defines policy is the majority of the council. And it would be just a recipe for disaster to have a council trying to implement a policy and then another politician who disagreed with that vote, who's in charge then of implementing the policy, 'cause they'll just not implement it appropriately. So, in summary, I'm not in favor of putting anything on the ballot, certainly not this year. And we should definitely stay with Faulkner Act council manager form of government. Thank you.
I'll just bring my, some thoughts to it, a little closure. First of all, with all due respect to my deputy mayor, who I asked to serve as the deputy mayor and got unanimous, you know, approval. I'm really appalled to think that someone would, would want to change, you know, the form of government from the folks being able to elect their mayor. And you've heard all the background, the detail. To take that privilege away from them and to put it in the hands of five council people. Because you, you've heard a lot of explanation, but, but nothing that says what would make it better. Because in that form, nothing changes. Nothing changes. Other than the fact that you have a temporary mayor. Every year, you might be selecting a new one. And there are implications to that. I have to tell you, I talked to folks all over. You go down to Trenton, you got a form of government like that, and people don't take you serious. They say, "Why do I have to worry about this mayor? There'll be another one next year." And just, again, I can't say I'm certain, but only 37%, okay, of the 565 municipalities adhere to this type of government. Which, you wanna know something? Seems like it can work if we work together. But quite frankly, I thought, deputy mayor, you might be willing to go and embrace what I think might be a good idea. And we've heard this brought up several times in the past. To have a form of government where the mayor and the council really are responsible for this community. See, because Mr. Jimes pointed out, and there was some discussion here, that the mayor and the council, we're, we're the executive board. We can't, I can't talk to the head of DPW. That's his job. Not allowed to. We can get in a lot of trouble if I do that, I've been told. Okay? I can't talk to, you know, someone at the fire department. I can't call the CFO and say, "That doesn't make sense." Well, someone may, you know, censure me. He described it, we could take some serious actions. Well, you know, that to me doesn't make a whole lot of sense. That, and, and, you know, I've, I've listened to people come up to the mic and ask me, "What do I think?" Well, I don't think putting all that power in one person's hand, it may be the best thing for this community. You've heard, you've heard, you heard those comments today. I've heard citizens come up here, all the years that I've served, even when I wasn't the mayor, saying, "How come you council people can't get anything done?" Because he's right. We can't, in some instances, because we're not allowed to. It's our form of government. Now, if that's what we choose, that's fine. We should work together, hopefully have the most competent people working for us, and get things done for, you know, the, the citizens of Scotch Plains. But you know, I'm not sure why Mr. Marcus, I guess because this article was written by Mr. Fortunato, who I happen to like and I think is a learned, bright person. But I also think that he's a Republican, I'm not sure he's a Republican committee person, but I think he may be someone that may be running on the ballot this year. So, it's hard for me to understand, you know, where, where all that commentary and that quoting from one individual who, while I like and respect, is a Republican committee person. I believe so. I could be wrong. You wonder what's that all about. So, that said, I see no reason to change our form of government other than the fact that we wanna pull a stunt. And I'm happy to hear that it doesn't appear that that's gonna happen. I'm happy that the citizens of Scotch Plains saw through it, okay? And I'd like to serve this community to the best of my ability for the years to come and to my successor. You know, we'll run on their own merits and we'll press on. So, thank you. I know Mr. Lehrer's gonna give me some grief because we do have a long agenda, and I'm just gonna stop there while I could say more. But thank you for this discussion. Next on the item, agenda, is, what do we have here? Proposed resolution calling on the legislature to make permanent the 2% cap on interest arbitration awards. I'm not sure who put that there, but maybe one can explain themselves.
I asked if we put on there... Jerry, do you wanna speak to this at all? Or do you want me to discuss?
Sure. As you know, back in 2010, the governor signed the law in bipartisan fashion that, you know, mandated that interest arbitration awards be subject to the 2% cap. In that same time, there's a 2% levy cap. As you all know, that we cannot exceed that. The amount to be raised by taxes can't exceed 2%. The biggest problem with a, a law like that is, when it comes to contracts, most notably your police contracts, that could end up in arbitration someday. What's happened over the years was, you know, you could get a 4%, you could be told, "You have to pay 4%. You have to be paid 5%. You have to pay 3%." So, really, it was just completely illogical to have a 2% cap and have the ability for an arbitrator, you know, to impose an award in excess of your 2% levy cap, 'cause it would result in pretty draconian cuts. I mean, it would be dramatic. And that's really not overstating it. If this law, anyway, actually backing up... So, the law is expected sometime this spring to expire. So, if that law expires and the legislature takes no action, that means the 2% cap will still be in place, but arbitrators no longer have to abide by that 2% cap and could end up telling us or any other municipality with a contract that ends up in arbitration, that they have to pay 4%. So, if you have to be subject to a 2% levy cap and then you're being told you have to give out, you know, 16% over four years, you're gonna lose cops. You're gonna lose staff. I mean, it's gonna be draconian. And I said that word twice, and I'm not overstating it. Some of the things will stay the same regardless of the sunset provision. Oh, no, the rocket docket, as far as, you know, how fast the arbitration awards have to be issued. The arbitrator would still have to issue a detailed report, and it would still be, you know, random selection of arbiters. But, you know, so what the league is asking, the league of municipalities, is they're asking for governing bodies across the state to pass a resolution in support of extending the 2% cap on interest arbitration. Because if you don't do that, the 2% levy cap is still gonna be there. And I gotta be honest with you. We have a contract coming up at the end of December. And I have the utmost confidence that we're gonna have good negotiations. Our labor union for the police department, they're a good bunch of people. They're a reasonable bunch of people. But the fact is, if you know you can go to arbitration and get an award that's 3% or 4%, that exceeds your levy cap, there's gonna be a lot of problems. So, Councilman Jones got the letter. I think you all got it. It was in the form of an email from the league. If you're on those email lists. And he had suggested it be something we discuss, you know, for our next business agenda. I, I would strongly urge the council to consider passing a resolution in support of this, sending it off to the state and our legislatures with that. That's pretty much it.
We don't need to discuss this evening. We can discuss it at the business meeting because we have a lengthy agenda ahead of us.
I would like that people have anything to discuss on it. We go ahead and discuss it now so that we can vote on it at the business meeting.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we add this resolution to the business meeting agenda.
I'll second that.
If we have a motion, we have a second. But I hope that there's a comment that would like to be made.
We can always discuss after a motion's been made.
Okay, well, we have the motion made and seconded. And I'm asking, you know, Ms. Dylan Eller...
I, I mean, I, I understand the concerns here. I really do. Jerry, for you as a municipal manager and for us as the governing body of the township, I, I, I don't believe that reckless arbitration awards have been the trend in New Jersey. I understand that, I understand that this has been in place. It's something that I really need to research further before we have discussion. I, I, you know, I sometimes think that some of these can be a bit frivolous because we're talking about, you know, essentially passing a resolution that is very little value, just to send something forward, while we have, quite frankly, much bigger problems in Trenton to deal with. So, I, I, I just don't get it. It's very late. I wish we could just discuss it at length at the business meeting.
I have a couple of comments if I can do that.
This isn't, this is pretty specific here. This is very specific and could have serious consequences for Scotch Plains. It's also timely. I don't think we should put off just to research more. We've had, you know, we've had this available to everyone on the council for a while to look into. The date that this is set to expire is April 1st this year. So, this expires in about three and a half weeks. If the legislature doesn't act, that means any negotiations starting April 1st of this year, the arbiters, should it go to arbitration, could give 4% or whatever they deem appropriate. And I wanna caution people that, like our manager said, and as I believe too, in looking at the numbers of the budget, if huge chunks of our budget is contractually, or I'm sorry, is union contracts, salary and wages and benefits, a huge chunk, an overwhelming chunk of it is. If you change the trajectory on those numbers If you change the trajectory on those numbers and they start going up a lot faster and we're still subject to a 2% cap, we're talking significant cuts we'll have to make, either to number of police officers or to other programs. Unfortunately, if that were to happen, I think one of the places that would be on the chopping block is Recreation Department, and I would hate foresee that.
We don't want to be given what.
We actually have a budget in here. We spend a good amount of money on recreation, and I appreciate not being interrupted while I'm speaking. You know, I don't want to cut recreation in this town. I don't want to have to lay off police officers. It's not so much to ask that we on the council pass a sheet of paper. It's not taking up a ton of our time. In fact, I encourage all residents of Scotch Plains, pick up the phone, call your legislator. Tell them that this is important. This is important so that we can keep our cross structure in line here in the town. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, I have a question.
Let everyone go through it. Please.
All right. My, my question is, and maybe Mr. Lehrer or Mr. Giles can answer this. In this letter here, it says, the reference is made to steps, salaries, steps, and longevity payments to an average of 2% annually over the life of a contract. So, if I'm reading that correctly, does it, it means it could exceed 2% in a given year as long as the average is 2% over whatever period the contract is? Is that correct?
Yeah, I guess in simple terms, if an arbitrator wanted to give a four-year contract for 3, 1, 3%, 1%, 0, and 0.
Right.
You could probably make that argument, yeah.
Right. Okay. Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify.
I support this. Going back to our moment of kumbaya and non-partisanship, I think that we should all be supportive of this, because this affects every one of us that pays property taxes in this town. The only reason why I would imagine that some wouldn't is because it's got Chris Christie's name on it, and somehow we need to be opposed to that for some reason. But at the end of the day, as we've heard from, from our manager and from Councilman Jones, if, if we have to pay increases of the largest portion of our budget above the 2% cap, guess what? We're going to cut out services, we're going to lay people off, and that's, we can't do anything else. We cannot by law not have a balanced budget. So, that's the bottom line. So I would support this resolution, and I support maintaining the 2% cap in interest arbitration.
Just a way, what some folks did pick up is, Mr. Giles, it's wonderful to send this. We've done this in the past, but you know what? We, we're not guaranteed anything here, right? I mean, to the point, you send it down, and I'm not adverse, and I would support sending it down, like we've sent hundreds on how we fund our schools and everything else. But we would hope that, you know, something will come out of it. So I understand, you know, Councilwoman Jillon Ellis, you know, reservation, because it's kind of like, you know, we've got things that are really important to work on, even by your own adishing, your gesture before, you know, who knows where something like this goes. But I don't see there being a downside, so I would support it. And for that reason, maybe we could ju, not for that reason, but let's move on.
If I may add one quick sentence.
Do you want another, one more comment?
Yeah, I would. And Mr. Giles, you could speak first, but it is a conference meeting, so I just did want to finish up my, my discussion points. And that's okay. Jerry, did you want to say something?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, and you're right, and you'll notice since I've been here, I, I get these in the email all the time, and I've never, I've never once sent one to council for consideration. I actually wouldn't even have sent this one. Councilman Jones recommended it, and when he said which one it was, I mean, the fact is, this is the one that'll probably have the most direct impact on the municipality other than that. But you'll, I agree, generally speaking, I don't push these.
Thank you for your, Jerry.
I mean, I just, you know, would caution the public. I'm not, I'm not in favor of scare tactics. As soon as there ever is, is conversation about budget, what you typically hear is, if this doesn't go a certain way, we're going to lay off cops, we're going to cut recreation. Nobody in Scotch Plains is discussing anything like that. I want to make sure that the public specifically understands that. I also want people to understand that by, what this would do, is this would prohibit arbitrators from awarding, if they determined that it was fair to do so, over 2%. I, I, I just think we're really, I mean, I, you know, I, I look forward to discussing it further at the business meeting. This is, this is, this is politically driven, and it was completely unnecessary this evening.
Okay. Well said.
Especially in light of number eight, which I can't even wait to get to.
Next item is a star.
Excuse me, but we had a motion and a second.
All those, I thought we, I apologize. We had a late day.
Motion on the floor.
Right, all those in favor. We had a motion, we had a second, we don't need a roll call to put this resolution.
Can we hear what the motion is?
The motion is to put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Are we okay? Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. We had a motion, we had a second, all those in favor. Aye. Done. Move on. It was a nay, please. Please note. Stark Preservation Ordinance, this is yours.
This was my discussion with Mr. Giles, and I know this issue has come up in the past, perhaps not when I was here, but I know that this is an issue that has presented itself. And my understanding is that the Historic Preservation Commission has really not operated, has not been functional, that they were given an opinion some time ago by, by their council or by council at that time, it was not me, that, that their ordinance has some defects. I've had an opportunity to review it, and you see my memo. I'm not asking you tonight to discuss it at any length. I'm just telling you that there are problems with the ordinance. Its, its, its core structure has problems. I'm suggesting that you look, look at my memo carefully, that you give me some thoughts, give me your, your direction, because at some point, at some point, if you want, and that's the question, if you want to move forward and, and reconstitute your Historic Preservation Commission, we need to correct the ordinance. It has problems.
You're going to deliver your copy last year earlier.
Yes.
And you're going to distribute the original ordinance for everyone to see.
I will, I will distribute the original ordinance, but that's really the issue. I'm not asking for you to make this.
That was well researched too, by the way. I read it, and I'm sure everyone else did. Any comments for Mr. Lehrer?
I received a detailed memo on my desk today, and Jeff, you may or may not have seen it, which I haven't even had the chance to read, but it's pretty lengthy, as it relates to the historic, you know, the past actions of the historic commission, so.
Did you realize this?
Yeah, I just, I just got it when I walked in the office late this afternoon, so.
Interesting history of Mr. Giles. I think some of those people in those houses would be very surprised. Our next item up, folks, is the salary cap again. I don't know who put this on.
One of the concerns that I'm continuing to have throughout the budget process is the, and obviously, because of the sensitivity of the information, I'm not prepared or wanting to vet out any public official's salary. But what I would inform the public is that you would be extremely alarmed if you could see the history of the salaries being paid out of the municipal building in Scotch Plains. I'm very concerned, as we move into budget proceedings, that there has been a presumption of a 2% pay increase, particularly for our department heads, without a corresponding evaluation system. My concerns are twofolds. We definitely need a system of evaluation, but even beyond that, and if I could give you even a frame of reference for how high these salaries are, are becoming, you would be extremely alarmed. We really need to step back and look. In particular, when we talk about things like, we're, we're talking about petitioning the legislature to pass something that prevents unions from exceeding the 2% when their payments into health benefits will be increasing substantially, but we're not taking the responsibility for looking closely at the salaries that we are awarding at the executive level in this town. And quite frankly, our township manager is nowhere near one of the highest of them. Given his level of responsibility, that's a whole nother conversation. So what I'm really asking the members of the council to do is to work with me and to make adjustments to the salary ordinance if necessary, so that we can really pass a budget that is responsible. There is no reason that the salaries that we have been paying out of this building should continue. It is not responsible. And the salary ordinance was passed by this council. This is something, not by this council, by a former council. This is something we have a direct voice in.
Just very briefly, I think we should take as firm a line with non-union employees that we take with the union employees. The treatment should be equivalent across the two of them, insofar as we can. Obviously, union employees are, it's a contractual negotiation.
We don't have union employees making in the 170,000 range.
Correct, and I, and I agree, we should take, we should take as firm a line on behalf of the taxpayer with, with both. There shouldn't be a, shouldn't be a different, a, a different approach, in so, other than insofar as it's dictated by, by statute.
I have a question for Mr. Lehrer. If I don't speak publicly, how much specific information can I, if I don't speak about individual names, how specific can I get as far as salary information?
Not very much. You can, you can talk generally about, as you've talked about, that you have concerns about union, non-union salaries. I can tell you that there are certain statutory employees that you have to be somewhat careful about, and we can have an offline conversation.
I understand, but we also did approve this council, this, excuse me, a prior council approved the salary ordinance. So what I'm trying to understand is, unless that is just symbolic, what is within the purview of the council? Because if you look at the ranges that were approved in that salary ordinance, they're substantial. I mean, they're really substantial dollar figures there.
The council has the budget powers. You have all of the budget powers. It's presented by the manager to you. You have powers over your budget.
About to give range.
Yeah, sure. It's, it's within your purview. But there are certain limitations on certain statutory employees that you need to be aware of, and I can talk to you about those, that, that there is a higher standard for certain statutory employees, and they're identified in Title 40, and there's no secret that it includes your tax assessor, your, your clerk, your tax collector, and your chief financial officer.
And what does that obligate us to do?
It, it, I'll read you the language.
Okay.
Because it's important. It says, "Salaries, wages, or compensation fixed and determined by ordinance may, from time to time, be increased, decreased, or altered by ordinance," your powers. "No such ordinance shall reduce the salary of, or deny without good cause, an increase in salary given to all other municipal, municipal officers and employees to, any tax assessor, chief financial officer, tax collector, or municipal clerk during the term for which he shall have been appointed." So there is a higher standard for those statutory employees. So you, you have an obligation of good cause. If you're going to decrease for those four categories, you have to have good cause to do it. For to increase, or to deny an increase for those statutory employees, you have to have good cause.
But here's my, here's the problem that we're presented with.
Right.
Absent Mr. Giles, who has assured me that there will be an evaluation tool in place, quite frankly, we don't have a vehicle for evaluating cause going back, because there have been no evaluations of our employees. There are no records of this. So, what we, what we would tell the taxpayers tonight is that regardless of where the salaries are and where they are headed, it's essentially guaranteed that we would continue to pay and increase the pay at 2%. Substantial, not substantial, but numerous employees who are already being compensated far beyond what the public would have expected to be paying. I mean, this is really troublesome for me, and I understand our limitations here, but I also, we talk about responsibility to the public. I'm, I'm, I mean, it's alarming. It's alarming to me as a taxpayer, quite frankly, who works for the public sector.
Is that a discussion that can be held in a budget session, or does it have to be an executive session?
If you're going to talk about decreasing or performance of any particular employee, it would be a topic for closed session, but you'd have to rise them and give them the opportunity to speak publicly. So it is, under the Open Public Meetings Act, it is a topic that can be discussed in executive session, but you'd have to properly rise them and give them the advance notice.
Right.
I want to, I, I do want to say this, and I probably should have prefaced my comments by saying, this is not a disappointment with any particular individuals. I'm not, I, I fully understand that, and that's not, that's not what I'm speaking to. What I'm speaking to is the numbers, not the names associated with them. This is not a personal. I'm looking at the numbers as you look down the list of salaries, and where, where I'm at is this. Last year, we passed a budget, and we had a conversation later on in the year, essentially that we, by passing the budget, we had approved these raises. And that was troublesome for me, because I, I want to be able to fund our departments as they should be, but I, I have an issue essentially becoming a voice that's adding to some of these salaries. And I, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm asking for your advice, as well as the sentiment of the council, as far as where we can go to navigate this.
I'm sorry, I, I, my experience as a municipal attorney is that the discussions of the nature you're talking about can certainly take place offline with, with the manager. And, and if you want to have a public discussion.
Jeff, I've been trying to have this conversation now for, this is three managers. I mean, Mr. Giles has been very responsive. I'm not, I, but what I'm talking about is the potential to alter an ordinance. I'll have this discussion wherever. It doesn't matter. I mean, I thought a conference meeting would have been the best place, and that's why I asked it be put on the agenda. I didn't fly off the cuff here.
Right.
So I don't know who looks, I mean, I would hope that the agendas reach you ahead of time.
I think, you know, and Jeff can jump in, correct me if I'm wrong at any time. Obviously, my understanding really, is the only logical way to address the issue in a generic manner without individually discussing an employee, is looking at this salary ordinance 2012-8 and trying to determine if there's going to be some type of across-the-board that affects everybody reduction in the top end of the salary. If that's the case, then.
Non, non-union.
Non-union. If that's the case, then you could do it. However, and I've had this discussion with a prior municipal attorney, if you're going to do that, and then in a, some people, it might not affect their salary, because they may not be close to that top-end salary range. But if it comes close to affecting somebody who is in that top end, then you get into the matter of reducing their pay, and I'm not sure, you know, that's allowed. I know particularly it's not allowed if you're dealing with one of the four statutory, statutorily protected employees. So ultimately, really, the only, you know, I guess logical, for lack of a better word, or appropriate way, is to talk about discussing an across-the-board reduction by a percentage, and not a dollar amount, of the top end of the salary range. And that's how you.
But not, but not out of somebody's, I'm not looking, the horse is gone, you know, it's, it's gone. And I'm not looking to hurt people and the income that they're counting on, while I don't necessarily agree with where it's gone. I don't want to continue to give people 2% raises when their salary has reached a certain level. That's the piece where I'm concerned about. I'm not asking to reduce, I'm asking to cap.
My, my, and I know you're going to jump in, and I'm just basing this off of a prior municipal attorney's conversation. When you have the salary range that's established by council, it's typically the administration, whether it's the mayor in another form of government, or the manager in this form of government, to appro, to give whatever raise they deem appropriate, as long as it's within that salary ordinance. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. Absolutely correct. If you identify a range, it's the manager who makes the decision where in that range the salary falls.
So then I guess what I'm asking is, is there a sentiment amongst the council to adjust the range in the salary ordinance so that we can essentially cap the direction some of our high-end salaries are going? Maybe I, I should have worded myself, maybe I should have explained it more clearly.
That's clearly within your project.
Doesn't affect somebody, if, if that cut doesn't affect.
I'm not, I'm not asking, and I would ask you to do research to make sure, I'm not, I'm not, this is not an attempt to be, to, to undo something that's already been done. What I'm asking is that we act responsibly moving forward, particularly in light of the fact that we have a 2% cap, particularly in light of the fact that we have multiple budget needs, and there needs to be an end. I mean, this is not, this is not a new concept. This is a concept that's been vetted out at the state level. Superintendents have salary caps. There's all kinds of conversation about this. I don't see this in municipal government, and I don't see where there's not a, a trend to move this forward. I understand it may not be very popular, but the good news is, I'm not one of the three people running for office this year. So I can kind of vet out one of the unpopular things.
There's certainly been a lot of talk about, you know, public sector salaries, you know, we've heard it, alluded to the superintendents. You know, I, I mean, we know that the overwhelming 60-something percent of our costs are contractual. So ultimately, on this level, we're dealing with, you know, a relatively small percent in the grand scheme of things. You know, we have two unions, and, you know, most towns our size have three, so we're kind of lucky to that end, you know, but, you know, it's, it's tough. I mean, I can understand the frustration of the public when they see some of these numbers. I think sometimes, you know, there's some perspective that's not in there, and, you know, when most of the, I'm not speaking out of turn, since it's public information, most of the six-figure salaries in the town are, you know, union members and not non-union members, you know, so. But ultimately, again, as Jeff said, you know, really the issue is, does the council want to make any type of across-the-board reduction? And before that comes up, I will certainly have to look at it to see what reduction to see what reduction wouldn't affect the current salary. And then, you know, we'll just go from there, so.
So the next steps would be that you'll examine it, and then we'll discuss it?
Yep.
Where does that impact as far as adopting the budget? Because if we adopt the budget, then what happens? Because two percent raises were built in by all the department heads to their budgets.
Yes, but you're not going to affect anybody's current salary, so that really would have little impact.
That would have to be done by the way, salary ordinance. It's a separate issue.
So Jeff, you promised me that if we adopt the budget, we're not gonna turn around and say, Colleen, you voted for the budget, so you voted for the raises?
No, no. No, you have to adopt the salary ordinance, which you have the right in the prerogative to do, as long as it doesn't ad-
As you do.
As long as it doesn't adversely affect that person, which, which Jerry talked about. But you, you, you have to adopt a separate salary ordinance to establish ranges, and you have, you have that discretion.
So we will not adopt the budget till this has been resolved, at least as it relates to their potential increases this year. There'll be that discussion. We're not gonna blindside Councilwoman or anybody else here. I mean, I think what she said makes reasonable sense. To be discussed, right, Mr. James? Okay. Does anybody else have a question on that? Are you okay with that? We've done that, we're not gonna get resolution.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is downtown commercial business, downtown commercial business district, please, or we're, we only have a couple more items left.
Mayor, you, you asked me to take a look at this. I think that, for one issue, which was the, the budget issue, which-
Right, exactly.
I explained it to you today. I'm not sure that, if that's what this is on here for.
You know, it's just, need to find out where-
Oh, I'm sorry, this is Mr., yeah, I'm sorry.
You and I talked about another thing, I think this was Mr. Vastines.
Yes, I wanted to make a motion that we create an ad hoc committee with sunset provisions to study the downtown business district, to incorporate the previous study that was done approximately fifteen years ago, to see if it still has any relevance. But for this group to be made up of property owners, business owners, and other appointed members of the public. And what my motion is, is for you, Mr. Lair, to begin work on a resolution. I don't know if it's a resolution or an ordinance, I think it's a resolution-
It's a resolution to establishing ad hoc committee.
To establishing ad hoc committee.
Yeah.
For that purpose.
Second that motion. My only comment is that we're not spending any money, however, at this point. Right, you can, I don't care how many ad hoc committees you want to set up. But I mean, are we gonna go and someone is gonna say, well, now we've got a fifty thousand dollar evaluation? I mean, that resolution doesn't authorize that.
No ad hoc committee has the right to approve-
No, 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 I understand, I mean-
I'm just clarifying.
I, I, pursuant to our technology group, this ad hoc committee will be that similar to our technology or any other group. I have, have no objection to that. But obviously, you know, we're not bringing any professionals in at this time other than, you know, Mr. Lair's boss, which is to prepare the resolution.
And the, the concept of an ad hoc committee is that, that they come back to the governing body and-
I get it.
Say, we want to spend, we, we recommend the spend, expenditure of this dollars.
Right, and the council will vote on it.
Correct.
Right. No, that's perfectly fine. Just want to make it clear. We had a lot of discussion about ad hoc committees earlier.
Who would be, who would be appointed to the committee?
It would be, I think you have some of- I would propose that it be members of our business owners, members of our property owners, and members of the community, all of which will be council appointments. So the majority of the governing body would vote the same way we would vote for someone to be on the zoning board or the planning board.
And would there be a liaison from the governing body on this ad hoc committee?
Uh, I would suggest that, I don't know. I mean, I, I actually would, would leave it up to your, your experience because I think that's been one of the problems, is that elected officials have gotten involved in the process and kind of muddied up the water or expressed individual beliefs. I would suggest, though, and I don't know how we do this, but we have a professional planner. And I would believe that somehow that professional planner should be involved in the process. So I kind of have a larger view of what it would look like, and I would hope that your, your experience and, and previous work with this would give it the details necessary.
I would just say, I'd like to say this. Councilman Vastine and I have spoken at length about the downtown. We've had opportunity to meet with business owners. We've discussed the idea that there's obviously a need for a vision in the downtown. I would really hope that this is something that is a genuine effort to do good things in the town that would include input from more than one political party, and that it wouldn't be something that true to form with the current appointments, with the appointments that took place in this year to a number of the boards, was really driven by alliances to one political party. Because I think that's not going to be productive for this township because, as we've heard at length this evening, it shouldn't be politically driven. So I would be happy to serve with a member of, of a, of a different political party as a representative on this board, or as a liaison, as a co-liaison to this board. And I think that's one way of ensuring that, if it's really a visionary body, that the vision long lives the duration of anybody's term on the council.
Well, I, I would suggest that your characterization is not a very accurate characterization, given that last year, every incumbent service provider was fired and replaced with political campaign contributors to your campaign. Whereas this year, we maintained approximately forty to fifty percent of all of the existing service providers that you guys had appointed last year. So if anybody's made this partisan, I would suggest that it is you.
Which, 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 which I may say, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna debate this thing, which, which might suggest that those fifty percent, that you didn't bring back the old ones, weren't that good. So congratulations for doing what you did last year, and so all of us. I mean, come on, you can't have it both ways. If you didn't bring half of them back because they weren't any good. Come on now, stop. Jeff, can we move on?
Yes, yes, I will. There's a motion to, to move this resolution. I will, to direct me to prepare it, yes.
You can prepare, Jeff, but I'd be, but I intend, folks, ladies and gentlemen, to sit at a council at our next meeting and to vote on this without having ample time to understand who the players are that are gonna be on this, what their charge is gonna be. I mean, this is the most political, you know, football I've ever seen. But we'll play it one more time. Okay.
We can only have nonpartisan elections.
Yeah, we'll have a nonpartisan, and this will be nonpartisan too.
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second.
All those in favor, excuse me, mister. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Leaf and Branch pick up. If I had to guess.
No.
No?
I didn't ask for it.
I guessed wrong?
Yep. I asked them to just put people on the agenda. We did have a discussion back in December, which was started by Councilman Marcus. We didn't come to a conclusion at that point, but I wanted to bring it back up in light of the fact that spring leaf and branch pickup is coming up. Typically, we do that in April. We also, as was previously alluded to, we have a new head of the Department of Public Works. So for those reasons, I thought it was timely that we discuss this issue again. Because I, you know, we don't have leaves out there on the ground right now. We've got snow. But just because of that, doesn't mean the leaf issue has gone away. So I want to start just from my perspective of defining what the problem is. The problem, in my, my opinion, is that oftentimes, we have leaves, loose leaves on the ground, as we're accustomed to having, being able to do in Scotch Plains, for what I consider to be too long a time between pickups. And this is anecdotal, but, for example, I know on my street this year, we had a pickup happen. It happened on a weekend. DPW was working overtime. They picked them up, street, you know, sometime late October. Street looked great. Literally, the next day, a whole bunch of, of private contractors, for folks who live on my street, put out huge piles of leaves again on the street. And they proceeded to sit there for six or seven weeks till the next pickup. And the reality is that it's, it's a bit of a safety issue. You know, same way, it's a problem when the street is tight due to snow. Same thing applies with, with leaves. You know, I think the fall is obviously a much bigger challenge than the spring because the volume is a lot higher in the fall. But I think the spring possibly presents an opportunity to dry-run, if you will, any, any policy changes. So as we've discussed a lot with our form of government tonight, it's not my purview to direct operations. But I can throw ideas out there for the, for the professional staff. The ideas which I think would be worth considering would be tighter and more clearly communicated timeframes in which leaves are going to be picked up and zones delineated in the town for those pickups. Another possibility that should be considered would be enforcement for non-compliance. You could start with warnings and then move up to actual citations. Another possibility would be requiring that people who use private contractors, if you use a private contractor, then the contractor would be required to haul the leaves away to the dump. If you're gonna go do it yourself, then you can still put it on the curb for free pickup. And that would be another thing where, you know, we would need an enforcement mechanism. There's other ideas out there that should be considered. I happen to not endorse them. Things like bagging leaves, or leaving leaves, requiring that people leave them well up on their property. I recognize if you leave a soggy pile of leaves for a month on your grass, you're gonna have no grass in that spot next spring, perhaps. So that's my thoughts on the issue. I'd like to hear other people's thoughts on the issue. The motion I'd like to make tonight would be to direct the manager and his, and his staff, I suppose, really direct the manager to study this issue and come back to us with recommendations and options, if he thinks there is any, in terms of way we can, we can improve this process.
Can the director of DPW-
I'd like to second that.
Can the director of DPW study it so the manager can resume his role in running the township instead of worrying about leaves? Because we do have a head of, we have director of DPW now.
That, my attention, and my understanding of our form of government is I only, we only direct things to the manager. Presumably, he would have the head of DPW do that, but I wouldn't, personally, I'm not gonna direct the DPW head to do that.
Well, that's, that's good news.
This is why I made the motion the way I did.
That's good news. I was hoping that you weren't asking the manager to spend his time looking at the leaf issue. Because the leaves are gonna continue to fall, no matter how many times we discuss the fact that they fall differently in other towns.
Okay, can we have a motion? We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay. Last thing on the agenda is the Shady Rest Scotch Hills Golf and Country Club. I put this here. It's been a long evening. We've listened to a lot of passionate and thoughtful folks tonight. And I, I simply gotta do the following. I'd like to authorize, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Mr. James to take immediate action to replace the Shady Rest roof, gutters, and leaders, clearly working with the architect, and of course, going out and doing all our due diligence on bidding. But my motion is immediate replacement of those items. I think we heard enough tonight, and I think the citizens deserve that this be done. Now, we're learning of the, the, the other home with similar situation. So I, that's my motion.
Right, I'm sorry, did you repeat the motion?
My motion is to authorize Mr. James to take immediate action to replace the Shady Rest roof, gutters, and leader system. Replace them immediately.
I, I, based on the severity of the situation as it's coming to me, I would second that motion. I did speak with Mr. James, and I, my understanding was the engineer was gonna also look at the building too, to make sure that the structurally- Are we moving ahead with that? Where are we at with that?
Yeah, so I'm gonna have him take a look at it. Mr. Lyons is only here on Thursday, so I'll get him here on Thursday.
What I've heard is that we're still two months out. So that's my rec, that's my motion.
Can I go back? Can I just ask one more question, though? This is based on what we discussed, and I'm sorry if this isn't the proper place. But as I've mentioned earlier, and you know what? There were a lot of indulgences were had today about the proper place in the meeting. So I'd ask for indulgence here. If you remember, I was not necessarily in favor of hiring this particular architect. I felt that there were some gaps in, the background wasn't necessarily there. I did support a unanimous vote because it was the recommendation of the manager. What I'm really struggling with is this timeline. And I, I have to, I don't know if I'm just tired, but I feel like there was conversation, there was a little bit of a delay in when we first passed the, passed the resolution and when the, when the architect was actually given the charge to begin the project. Or I could be wrong, because I remember you and I emailing back and forth about that. But it is March. So where, why is it taking so long?
We approved the ordinance. And that ordinance was for repairs, ordinance two thousand twelve eight, I believe it was. And that was to move money from the one old bond account for the repairs of this. And that was done in September. I believe September seventeenth was the last reading of that ordinance. The architect, after the bids were out, the bids had only gone out around that time because that, we also had just authorized the hiring and the going out to bid for preservation architect. We didn't approve a contract on the preservation architect until, I know you were here. So it was sometime in the middle or end of November. Okay, so it was the first meeting after the election. So we're at four months. I had initially, back in September, and the woman, who I forget which one it was, referred to three months. And that was me, I said three months. And I was just basing that off conversations I had with a variety of the people who were putting in, you know, proposals. So I just, you know, I thought that would be a good time. So now we're at four months, actually, not six, because we didn't approve this contract until November. And with any contract, I mean, you know, there's paperwork that has to be done for procurement reasons, pay-to-play rules, et cetera. So it takes a good week or two, once you approve the contract, to get the paperwork in and get it signed and get it going. So we're at four months. So yes, to answer your question, there was a gap there from the time we approved it, September, on September seventeenth, to the time we hired the architect, because the RFP process was still going on.
But have we spoken with this guy?
Yes, I speak to him on a regular basis over the last several weeks.
Is he saying that we can put a roof on there without causing the walls to crumble?
Well, I don't know. Yet, that conversation he hasn't had with me. I can tell you that he's, you know, he's- I can tell you he had conversations with some of the progress he's made. And I tried to pull it up, but I'll send you the memo first thing after the meeting. But no, I mean, this, as far as I was concerned, and what I had said, you know, and I can document on multiple council meetings, that, you know, no significant structural repairs would be done until the completion of the preservation plan. I've said that three times. The council never gave me any direction otherwise, the majority of council, anyway.
Listen to Mr. James.
Come on.
It's late, it's ten thirty-five. I've made a motion.
Okay, well, I'm-
I've listened to all the excuses.
Well, I listened to everybody's, I listened to a letter saying that I was stonewalling the process, and that's offensive.
But I was told, I was told, I was told by the architect that he was told not to go further by Mr. Poreo. And I came to your office and said that. And I chose, and I said to you, I don't want to get into this, this minutia of it. I am not micromanaging this project. But we, and I specifically went to you, and I said, you got the Department of Recreation, you know, commissioner or head, telling the architect not to do it. The architect is telling me this should be done. It has to be done. We've gone through two more snowstorms since that discussion you and I've had. So I'm making a motion to get this roof replaced immediately. And obviously, someone will check to make sure that the walls. But if the walls aren't, then secure the walls. It's part of the process. The building's not coming down. Reinforce it, put a new roof on it. You, this, this council has heard enough from the public.
Well, I, I would like to finish my comment. Because I-
Please, please, now, come on now. I, that's not right. Let him finish.
I've said on at least three documented occasion, the position that I had. The council was up here, and we governed, no matter what form of government it is, you're governed by the majority of the governing body. And nobody on, the majority of the governing body never gave an indication otherwise. Now, with respect to the roof, the ordinance that was passed moving the money did not say roof, it said repairs. So we were under the impression that nothing of any significance was going to be done until the completion of the plan. Now, if the council wants to change that, I don't care. I'm, please. If the council wants to change that, I don't care. If the council wants to change that, I don't care. I'm gonna be guided by the will of the majority of the governing body. And that's, that's my job. So vote how you want, I'm okay with that. But I'm telling you, I've, okay, I'm telling you, but the points I've made are documented, and I've never been given any indication otherwise. I have said multiple times that we're not gonna do significant repairs until the preservation plan is done. If the council wants to change that, go ahead, but don't say I'm stonewalling it when I've never got direction from the majority of this governing body to do otherwise.
Mr. James respectfully said, respectfully noted, respectfully taken. I made a motion, I don't care what happened yesterday. I don't disagree with some of the things you said, quite frankly. That's yesterday's news. Today, there's a motion on this table. I would like to hear from this council to say they're on board with this, or yea or nay. I'm gonna let the, I'm not micromanaging it. I've said, we'll let the manager work out the details, but his instructions are get a roof on that building before the daunting collapses.
I would support this, and I would just wanna say that when I called the manager on Sunday with a concern on this very building, he did get back to me. I mean, I, I, I wanna be fair to him as well. So, I mean, I definitely support this initiative, I think that it's very important, but it is a possibility that as we function or dysfunction as a governing body, it, the messages may get crossed in the process, and I don't think it's good for the township as a whole if there are, is, is ill will between the public and our representatives. So I just wanna make a note about that.
Here's the motion, and a second.
Was that, does that constitute a second?
Yes, I'm sorry, I did second the motion.
If I can add my two cents to this issue, I think obviously a lot of people are concerned about this issue. I think everybody deserves to know where all of your council members stand on this issue. Obviously, again, I arrived a little bit late to this issue. The first meeting I was on council was the November meeting when we voted on the contract to the preservation architect. At that point in time, my understanding of the situation, still my understanding of the situation, is we have an old building that's very challenged and frankly, in bad shape. I'm not an architect, I, I have been up there, I have looked at it, I don't know what the best course of action is. Clearly, it does need a new roof. When is the right point to put on the, the new roof? Do you put it on right now and then make structural repairs? I don't know the answer to that question, I'm not an architect. That's the reason why we hired a preservation architect to answer that question. I wanna hear an answer to that question before I draw, direct, you know, basically slapping a new roof on there tomorrow. Thank you.
Just to clarify, no one says just slap on a roof, they said to look at the structure as well, but to authorize him to do something and to get it done. Does anybody else have a comment on this before we take a vote?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Scotch Hills, the Shady Rest, is one of the great assets of Scotch Plains, the game of golf and the African-American community's athletic and social history in Scotch Plains. It is a source of great pride and honor to have such a rich historical gem in our township. Much has been said over the past few years about what should happen to the building and how the Shady Rest should be protected and maintained, or even enhanced, to provide our community with many more years of service and history yet to be made. In some instances, real differences of opinion have intersected, and as a result, the building has fallen in disrepair. However, and let me be very clear on this, the responsibility of that occurring does not fall on any one individual alone. The decisions on what to do and when to do it have always been the subject and oversight, whether it be the Township Council or the Recreation Commission. It has never been the decision or final word from any one person, no matter what anybody says or whatever the rumors say. There is not one single person in this township that can say yes or no to that facility without oversight from a Recreation Commission or this Township Council. And I'm quite disgusted with the rumors that I hear around town pointed at some of the employees that work very hard for this township. And I would hope that leadership and people of leadership and quality character would stop doing that, just as they wouldn't want people talking about them in the same way. Recently, the majority on council diverted money from a proposed spray park at Brookside to hire an architectural engineer to study the structure and develop a proposal on what should or can be done to preserve the Shady Rest. Some of that money was also to be used for emergency repairs as needed. We, as a governing body, committed ourselves to determining what we can do to ensure the long-term viability of the building and, more importantly, the history there. We did not commit to slapping a Band-Aid on the problem, which has been the case for all of these years. We did not commit to slapping a roof on the building, and the official record confirms that. Despite what the emails and rumors might imagine, once the study comes back, we can determine what course of action should be taken. Until then, repairs have been made to fix the problems caused by the leaking roof, and once all the snow has melted, additional work will be done to fix the immediate issues. All of the emails and rumors are nothing more than theatrical manipulation and have nothing to do with the truth. It is unfortunate that the Shady Rest has become a source of political manipulation. I believe this blatant manipulation for political purpose does harm to the legacy of the Shady Rest and its future in our community. Excuse me, but if you cannot remain quiet, I'm gonna ask you to leave the chamber. There's an appropriate time for public comment, this is not it. Forcing people to choose sides prevents us from working together to find the right solution and is counterproductive to progress. Whether it be pictures that have been photoshopped with bulldozers, the exaggeration of claims as to the extent of damage from these past few snowstorms, or even the barrage of emails out to your group to rally supporters, as if some faction on council would be opposed to the idea of making improvements. I regret that we've, that you have been manipulated into believing that we do not wanna save this historic legacy. It is simply not the truth. But here is the truth. Last year, the Democratic majority had the votes and the will to fire the township manager, and they did. The Democratic majority had the votes and the will to fire every service provider to the township, and they did. The Democratic majority had the votes and the will to cut the library, and they did. The Democratic majority had the votes and the will to use the sewer fund balance to artificially lower the budget, and they did. The Democratic majority had the votes and the will to use additional general fund balances to artificially lower the budget as well. And the Democratic majority had the votes and the will to buy a radio station that doesn't even cover the entire town. The Democratic majority had the votes and the will to hire a fifty-four thousand dollar a year company to run the TV station, when volunteers did it for free before. The Democratic majority, led by Mayor Glover, had the votes and the will to do all of these things last year, and yet, they did nothing for the Shady Rest. They could've put a roof on there last year, but they did nothing. They could've replaced the, the roof last year. The deputy mayor last year was the liaison to the Recreation Commission. She could've made the Shady Rest a, a issue a priority, yet she did nothing but voted for the spray park instead. Mr. Lamont Davis was a member of the Recreation Commission, and yet, he did nothing. They had the votes, and with the gimmick budget, they had the money, but they did nothing.
Hold it, please, 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 enough, enough. Can we maintain some decorum here?
You did nothing.
I can understand your sentiment, and you're not to attack a citizen. Sir, gentle, sir, enough, and enough, and enough, enough with you attacking a citizen of Scotch Plains.
They did nothing. Given that lack of action, when clearly they had the majority to improve, to make any improvements, I have to believe that this issue is not really as important to them as they would have you believe. Or they would have done something when they were running the township.
No, enough, everybody.
On the other hand...
Quiet in this courtroom. Well, well, adjourn this meeting. I understand your sentiment, I'm sitting here as frustrated as you are listening to this, but allow the gentleman to finish. I understand, and I don't disagree, but allow him to finish.
After nothing happened for the previous year under Democratic control, in a very short period of time, we have put forward, we have moved this forward issue further than they have in years. We have expressed our desire to the Recreation Committee to rename the Scotch Hills the Shady Rested Scotch Hills in honor of the rich history of the Shady Rest and the present and future history of Scotch Hills. We have expressed our desire to the Recreation Committee, Commission, that a fund be started to erect a statue of John Shippen to memorialize his legacy and his contributions to the Shady Rest, our community, and the game of golf. So while I appreciate you coming out on this subject and expressing your concerns, I would advise that you take a closer look at those who seem only to talk the talk, but never actually walk the walk. Are they the ones who will lead the way with action? So far, when given the opportunity, they have only been capable of providing words and photoshopped pictures. You all should determine if they will really be the ones who will actually provide the leadership and the will to produce action and results that will truly preserve the Shady Rest. After all, they could've solved this problem last year. They had the votes, but not the will. I would hate to think that they were simply using this issue to manipulate your opinions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I, I, my only response would be Russia didn't invade the Ukraine yesterday, but I, I can't, I can't even dignify an answer, you with an answer. Colleen Jolinella, please.
I just wanna say this, and, and in the entire time that I've served with you, Councilman Bestin, I've never been personally disappointed in you, and, and I am tonight, because what you've, you've never, this is, I mean, it's, it's, you, you actually know the things that you're saying to be untrue, and that, to me, shocks me, because I know you pers, I'm, I'm actually upset. I know you personally, and I know you to be better than this.
So, first of all, I think it's disheartening that this conversation, this whole discussion, has gone on the way it has. I understand without question the importance of the issue. I clearly feel the same in terms of the, the importance of this building and its meaning to our community, and the seriousness by which we undertake our responsibilities to address the issues that the building faces, to preserve the building and to repair, renovate the building so that it can continue and, and remain a part of our community and memorialize all the, the history and the, and the culture and the accomplishment that, that goes with the building. I think it's very unfortunate that somehow this issue, the way it's been discussed tonight, either becomes a for or against. I, I don't see it that way. I mean, everyone on this council has expressed support for the action we've already taken, and that is to reallocate money that we had in a, in a bond ordinance to be used for the purposes of conducting a preservation study and for repair work to be done at the facility. Now, that was done back in September, I believe it was September seventeenth. And unfortunately, we've had a long, hard, snowy, cold winter, and that building has suffered the brunt of additional, you know, pounding from the weather conditions, not unlike every other building in Scotch Plains. So when dealing with an issue such as this, I like to approach it by gathering the facts. So let me explain what I've done over the past week, two weeks with regard to this issue. I am the liaison to the Recreation Commission. And last week, at the Recreation Commission meeting, I was there and I got to hear about a lot of information concerning the status of the building and what's happened, what's been done by the town to address the issues at the building, and also to be informed about plans to, to take further action to address the problems and the concerns regarding the, the condition of the building. I was given reports by the Recreation Director. I was shown photographs of the condition of the interior and the roof of the building. So I had the chance to evaluate, evaluate that information and to take into account what's been given to me in terms of the status of the building. Subsequent to that, last Friday, I had the opportunity personally to go to the building along with other representatives of, of the township, including the town manager, to inspect the building myself. Both the interior, and we went through, I'd say, you know, if not the entire building, pretty close to it, I mean, every, every, the entire building, every floor of that building, to, to observe the condition of the building. And to try to understand what the condition is and the concerns that have been brought up about the recent condition and how it's been affected by the weather, et cetera. Beyond that, I had the opportunity to actually go onto the roof at the building and inspect the roof myself to see what the condition was, or is. Now, I'm not a roofer, and I don't pretend to have any knowledge about what makes for a satisfactory roof or an unsatisfactory roof. I mean, I, I suppose certain conditions, even to someone who's a layperson such as myself, you can readily observe problems, and I don't think that there's any question that there are some, some problems with the roof. Having said that, the information that I was given by people who know more about conditions of roofs than I do described what had been done, actions taken by the township with respect to the roof to ameliorate problems and leaking and whatever issues have arisen with regard to the roof. There's more to be done, and no one disputes that. So I'm privy to that information I saw for myself. Now, when we normally go about addressing an issue such as this where repair work needs to be done, we are not the professionals that decide what the work is gonna consist of, how it's gonna be done, and precisely how much it costs. The way that information is provided to the town council to make a decision is it's given by some professional by way of a proposal or a contract or what have you. There's nothing, I, I haven't been given any information tonight which I can rely upon, which tells me... I haven't been given any information tonight which I can rely upon, which tells me what needs to be done to the roof, who's going to do the work, how much is it going to cost. A lot of questions have been brought up in terms of the roof. Can it be put on the building without causing further damage to the building? I don't know the answer to that question. I don't think anyone else sitting up here does. In fact, there was a comment, there was a question asked by one of the residents who came up to speak tonight, and he asked the question, what type of roof is going to be put on? And the mayor answered, to be determined. Well, when is that going to be determined, and how is that going to be determined? So if I'm in the position of having to make a decision about putting on a new roof, I'd like to know what type of roof it's going to be and how much it's going to cost and what is entailed. I'm going to refer back to the meetings that we held previously regarding this issue in the minutes from the meeting. And I'm simply reading comments that were already made. There's a comment here by councilmember Jelenella, August 20, 2013. It states, "Councilmember Jelenella agreed that the grant applications for the preservation plan and long-form applications should be submitted. However, councilmember Jelenella requested that a new roof not be considered due to the potential damage it may cause to the existing structure." Further comment was made by the councilwoman. She stated that the main concern now, and this is back in August, is doing any work on the building in the condition that it currently is in. Councilmember Jelenella stated that step one will be to bring in a preservation architect to prepare a preservation plan study. The council can then make sound decisions in a logical order that will do great things for the facility. Now, I happen to agree with those comments. I think that makes sense, and I think that that's a reasonable and rational approach to what needs to be done. Now, quite frankly, I agree with everyone who's come up here tonight about the importance of the building, and I don't know why it's taken so long to get the preservation study done. It shouldn't have taken this long, but it has. I am told that the study is forthcoming and should be here within three to four weeks. That's what I've been told. Now, whether we wait that long to take action or not is debatable, but I think this is a fair and sensible approach, and that is, I would suggest that between now and our next meeting, March 18, we get some more information from whatever sources, a professional that talks about the condition of the roof and whether the roof ought to be repaired right now and the roof replaced at the time that we get this preservation study. In addition to everything that I've previously stated, and again, I'm not a roofer, so I don't know the answers to these questions, and no one else up here is a roofer also. But I've been told, if you put a new roof on the building now, you're going to have to remove various systems on the building, and that if you do that now and there are renovations to the building later, you're going to have to rip up that roof that you just put up. Okay, so that's something to consider. Well, you say it's ridiculous. I don't think it's ridiculous, and please don't interrupt me.
I'm just wondering, are you almost done?
I'm almost done.
You're almost done?
Yeah, I'm almost done.
Ladies and gentlemen, he's almost done.
I'm almost done. So I think the question tonight is, is the building safe? And I happened to be there this past Sunday for an event with a lot of other people, and is it structurally sound? In the interim period, if it's not, no one should be allowed in that building. That's how I feel. And I also feel that between now and March 18, our next meeting, we ought to be provided with more definitive information that allows us to make a sound decision in terms of what ought to be done, not simply whether I agree with the mayor, who thinks that you ought to put a new roof on tonight, or whether I agree with anyone who doesn't agree with that and believe it should wait. We have waited too long, and we have waited too long for answers, but that's what we depend upon, that's what I depend upon, in order to make a decision. So I would suggest that we table this matter until March 18, and in between now and March 18, we get some more answers so we can be more prepared and have more information in order to make a sound decision and to make a responsible decision as to what ought to be done. I don't think I have enough information tonight to do that and to simply say, put on a new roof.
Wait, wait, wait. Are you finished?
Yeah, I'm done.
You're done, you're done. Okay. All right, stop. Please, please. I don't say anywhere that I suggest that we just go slap on a roof, that we don't check out the infrastructure. I suggested that we authorize the manager, because he specifically said he doesn't have direction from this council, and he hasn't had it for three months. Well, I'm giving him specific, and I have a motion to give him specific instructions to go, because I've listened to you, I don't agree with what you said either, I don't agree with Mr. Bastine, but that's okay, we haven't agreed on a lot of things. But the fact is, this is very simple. We've talked too long, nothing gets done. I'm asking, I have a motion on the table, it's been seconded from Mr. Jimes to do the due diligence. Doesn't mean to go out and knock on some strange person's door and say, can you put a roof on, to check it out, to get the architect over here, get a contract over here, you know, get the engineer, whoever you need to do to get this job done, and then convey that to this council. So my motion is my motion. I'm not going to change it. If you have a different motion, that's fine.
No, 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 no.
I have a motion, don't interrupt me, I have the floor right now, and I haven't recognized it. So I have a motion.
Point of order.
There's no point of order, I have a motion on the table.
There is a point of order. This is a different motion than the one you made.
I have a second, it's the same one.
The point of order always takes precedence over the motion here.
The point of order is that that was not his original motion. His original motion was to authorize the manager to put a new roof.
You want me to read it to you? I wrote it. You had three pages of text there to read to these public, which I don't know how you even came up with it, but I said authorize Mr. Jimes to take immediate action to replace the Shady Rest roof gutters and lead system, consulting with the architect and the engineer, and to go through whatever bidding is necessary to do this. So it's right here. I'm a lefty, I wrote what I wrote, I said what I said, the camera heard it. So that's my motion. That's my motion, I haven't changed.
I've said my piece, thank you.
So, all those in favor?
I would call for a roll.
You could ask her, I would prefer that, actually.
Okay, enough, please.
I just said enough. Please, Ms. LaSina, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Jelenella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Marcus?
No.
Mr. Bastine?
No.
I, and I wish I had the votes to do it, folks, but I don't. But you heard who does. All right, well, that's the end of our little discussion tonight. Ms. LaSina, we're going to go into executive session.
No, 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 we have a...
No, I don't think, oh, excuse me, wait, wait, we have to review business...
I have an item that I'd like to add under other business that may be required as the council. So we have to review the business agenda items, and then I have a...
Can I do that first, then?
Sure.
All right, our next business, our next, our business meeting is on March 18, 2014. Ms. Jelenella, councilwoman, you have the invocation. We have a proclamation of Girl Scouts, I would ask that you be so kind to handle that for us here. We have approval of the minutes, we have consent agenda, communications managers' report, reports of special committees, new business agenda, other new business bill resolution, and then there's an executive session then as well.
I just want to ask that item number six, if we're not going to discuss it at length tonight, be removed from the consent agenda and placed under other new business, because I'd like to hear more about that and the specific, based on some of the concerns that we had pertaining to snow removal.
That's fine.
I want to just hear more about that, so can we just talk about it, the business item, the business meeting?
What it's going to be, real quick, and we'll do that, but it's going to be an emergency resolution because we exceeded the bid threshold due to the anticipated amount of storms, but that's what it's going to be. It's not going to be anything new for upcoming storms. But yes, we'll, I mean, I'll...
Thank you. And is this the same, is this the same house we've been talking about on Westfield Road? I don't remember the address.
Yeah, the lien comes in after the fact.
And it was demolished?
Ah, yes.
Okay.
My only comment on this agenda, we had an issue come up during our previous meeting when we were under the part discussing reports of special committees, and we had some discussion as to whether or not we should be able to discuss things that aren't related to special committees, and I'm just wondering if we want to put a new bullet item on the agenda for other comment, if you will.
I really think that that's an excellent idea. I mean, I voiced some concerns about the structure of the meetings when we first talked about it beginning of the year. It's ironic that there is literally no place for council comment on a council meeting agenda.
We're going to add that.
Where's that going to go, Jerry?
Typically at the end of a meeting.
Okay.
Right before public comments?
So...
Right before public comments. Okay, now, can, do you have something further?
In the spirit of that, I really do want to check in on where we are at with the environmental commission. My understanding is the chair received some correspondence this week that there may be an issue with his appointment or with some appointments.
Yes, the memo went out very recently, you should have it very soon in your next mail packet, but it came from the attorney, it's attorney-client privilege, as you listed here, so you'll just expect it within the next day or two. I have it.
Okay, I just want to, because unfortunately, a matter of record seems to be, I mean, I just, you know, I have been asking since I was appointed in January 2013. It's March 2014, and we haven't, we've had three managers and no meetings of the environmental commission, and I'm now awaiting the receipt of a memo that talks about the validity of appointments that were made last year. So I guess if we're going to adjourn to executive session, that's fine, but I just want to renew my concerns that this has been too long in the making.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn it to executive session? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, I'm just going to use the bathroom for a second.
That's okay.